Hi, Commissioner.
Joel, this is Tess. Can you hear and see me okay?
I don't think he's on yet, City Manager.
Okay, you can though. All right, great.
Here's Commissioner Lanier, Commissioner O'Connor, there's Commissioner Moody, and our city clerk. All right. I believe everyone is on. I'm not missing anyone, right? Nope. Okay. So Commissioners, we'll go ahead and get started with our Committee of the Whole meeting today. We have a very full agenda. So I'd like to, before we get started, just walk through a couple things with you. We're gonna start off, I'm gonna read a proclamation, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Jordan to join us to share some information about upcoming events related to Juneteenth. And then we have a number of updates from our city leadership team, and then we have action items. After our Committee of the Whole, we have an executive session on two issues related to pending litigation and illegal so I'm gonna ask to call that vote. We'll probably take, depending on how long cow goes, we'll take just a brief break, and then we'll go directly into executive session. And then we have our legislative team meeting at 2:00 PM, public safety meeting at 3:00 PM, and then we're back together tonight at 7:00 PM. So we have a full day together today, and so hopefully you'll get a break in between some of those commitments. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and get started. There's Mr. Jordan Eaton. So I'm gonna read this proclamation, and I'll turn it over to Jordan. Many of you know Jordan is the chapter president for the West Michigan National Forum of Black Public Administrators, and has been doing really great work in the community and in the city related to that role that he has been really leading. And then he'll share some information on the celebratory events related to Juneteenth. So with that, I'd like to share this proclamation, and then I'll be sending this proclamation over to him. Whereas, "The Emancipation Proclamation was signed on January 1st, 1863, declaring all enslaved persons in the Confederate Territory free and helped pave the way for the passage of the Thirteenth Amendment that formally abolished slavery in the United States of America." And whereas, "Word of the Emancipation Proclamation signage did not reach the most remote areas of the Confederate Territory until almost two and a half years later, on June 19th, 1865, when the emancipation orders were read in Galveston, Texas by Union General Gordon Granger." And whereas, "Juneteenth, also known as Freedom Day or Jubilee Day, is an American holiday celebrated on June 19th." Historic event. And whereas, "General Granger's announcement called for" "vision was far from complete and his" "work still today."
Hold on, Mayor. Someone's interrupting your proclamation. If you're not presenting, please put your mic on mute because you're cutting the mayor off and making this important proclamation. Please.
Thank you, City Manager. And whereas, "We acknowledge the historical and current importance of Juneteenth in the emancipation and liberation movement. And whereas, as we work together as a community towards equity in housing, education, healthcare, policing, and criminal justice reform, we honor all those who have lived and died in pursuit of racial justice. Now therefore, I, Rosalind Bliss, Mayor of the City of Grand Rapids, do hereby proclaim and recognize June 19th, 2020, as Juneteenth in Grand Rapids, and I urge all residents to become more aware of this important celebration in American history and to continue to promote diversity, racial justice, equity, and inclusion in our city." So thank you for allowing me to read that publicly. And now I'll turn it over to Mr. Jordan Eaton to share with us some information about what you can expect in our city this weekend.
Thank you, and good morning to the Mayor, City Commissioner, City Manager, and other elected appointed officials. Thank you for having me. On behalf of the National Forum for Black Public Administrators National Office in the West Michigan Chapter, along with the City of Grand Rapids Office of Equity and Engagement, I, Jordan Eaton, of the West Michigan Chapter President of the National Forum for Black Public Administrators proudly accept this proclamation. Juneteenth has been a day of celebration for many African Americans as a de facto second Independence Day, commemorating the end of slavery two and a half years ago after the Emancipation Proclamation, as you stated. It's a step towards inclusion in the greater American dream. It's a bittersweet holiday, though, a time of celebration but also a time of reflection, healing, and hopefully a time for the country to come together and deal with its legacy attributing towards African Americans that have built these United States. Juneteenth celebration in Grand Rapids, Michigan has been going on for decades. I honor every single organizer that has stood in the trenches, ensuring that this history was not forgotten. In addition, I want to acknowledge Julann Richardson for the countless hours she puts in each year to celebrate this cultural holiday, even utilizing the Grand Rapids Neighborhood Match Fund to fund this celebration previously. We see you and we thank you, Ms. Richardson. I encourage, along with the mayor's previously stated, the residents of Grand Rapids and surrounding communities to participate in all of the celebrations taken across Grand Rapids on Juneteenth and this weekend. These celebrations are free to attend, providing education activities for the entire family to enjoy. Social distancing practices will still be encouraged throughout the celebration, and thank you again for recognizing this great day. And for all of the events, we are asking everyone to head over to the Office of Equity and Engagement city page, that we will be posting all of the city events throughout the day and for the remainder of the week. So that's where you'll be able to find all of the activities and the times in the start of those. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jordan, for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager, we've heard a couple of questions related to some Juneteenth events. So did you want to add anything as we get ready to celebrate this important time?
Yeah, Mayor, again, I want to thank you and City Commission for being supportive of this, both currently historically and also our NFPPA local chapter. I'm very proud of President Eaton and all the chapter members for what they're doing, and not only for this, but also raising awareness about the desire for Grand Rapids to be nationally known as an inclusive community. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, we're gonna host a national conference of NFPPA here in 2021. Is that right, Mr. Eaton? 22?
It's 2022. We are actually hosting the national conference, yes.
Thank you for the clarification. But also, as he says, I intend to participate in several of the events this weekend and look forward to being part of it.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners, now I'll turn to our agenda, and the first item is an update on three important issues. Each one give us an opportunity to ask questions and to weigh in with our thoughts. So what I'd like to do is first have the City Manager update us on the police reform efforts underway. Secondly, a youth employment initiative that we have been working on pretty tirelessly over the last week. And then a COVID update. So we'll start with that, and then we'll move to the next item in the agenda packet, which is the overview of the recommendations related to the Cannabis Justice Work Group, and then we'll move through the agenda. So with that, I'll turn it to our City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we begin the presentation, I just want to thank the community and the public for co-laboring with us through these much difficult and challenging times. We have been working very hard, obviously, with the past three months with making sure that we maintain the health and safety of the community regarding COVID and the pandemic. And since May 30th, we've wrestled here locally with all of the national dialogue around reform. And I want to thank many of the community members who have been very peaceful in their demonstrations, as well as collaborative in conversations, as well as providing feedback through the various meetings and town halls that we've had. As you're aware, we've had a couple last week. I did send the City Commission a communication announcing 23 things now that we're considering as part of our efforts to improve committee and police relations and trust and accountability in this community. This is by all no means a complete list. We know that this is a start, but we have to start somewhere. And so I want to thank the Police Department and our Oversight Office, along with all of you. This has been a very, very collaborative effort among staff internally from my Law Department, as well as our Equity and Inclusion Office. And so I want to thank them for that work. So what you'll hear today is consistent with the communications that we share. There may be some additional update. I know the Police Chief is looking forward to having further conversation with the Public Safety Committee later this afternoon, but we'll try to cover as much as we can this morning. And as the Mayor said, we're also excited to give an update later on in the presentation about a commitment that we made last week regarding hiring for youth. And this was not just a superficial feel-good kind of statement that we wanted to do. We wanted to actually see some action too. And so I'm very pleased that we made a lot of progress in a short period of time. And last summer with our Youth Employment Program, we had about 40 or so people that were able to employ. And now we have, from the commitments based on what we've gotten from a short period of time, we have over 400 jobs. And we're continuing to work towards that thousand job number, and we'll hear more about that in the presentation this morning. As well as, can't forget where we are in the middle of COVID and the reopening of our economy and what we're doing to assist our businesses and support. So it will be a full briefing, and I'm going to ask if we will start with, we'll start with our Oversight Office and Mr. Brandon Davis, if he would turn his camera on. And then shortly after, he and the chief will take us through the first section on the police reform efforts along with the City of Grand Rapids. Mr. Davis? Let's go to slide number three, please.
Sure. Good morning. And we will start with our full-time public safety commitment. So there are several things that we've, steps that we've taken prior to this new discussion about police reform in Grand Rapids. And there are several things that I'm working with the community we've been able to complete. And that's the adoption of a strategic plan with a strong equity lens for budgeting and operations, as well as implementing equity training for leaders in every department with the National Equity Project. Revised our youth interactions policy in the Police Department, as well as created a foreign nationals policy to prioritize safety over status. We hired civilian staff to redeploy sworn staff, which was consistent with the deployment study, as well as improved the firearms and replica weapons ordinance. We also created the crime prevention through environmental design ordinance. In addition to that, we created a biased crime reporting protections through our Human Rights Ordinance, and we created the Office of Oversight and Public Accountability, as well as the Office of Equity and Engagement. We hired a new police chief, that being Chief Payne, and we created the second shift of community police officers and updated the Human Rights Ordinance. We published all of our police policies online and implemented body worn cameras. So on June 10th, 2020, the manager announced action items that detail a renewed commitment to accountability, reform, and equitable change. And those policies incorporate the six pillars of 21st century policing. And that includes building trust and legitimacy, policy and oversight, technology and social media, community policing and crime reduction, training and education, officer wellness and safety. And this initiative is divided into two categories. Those categories include immediate action items, those we've committed to completing within the next 60 days, and then items requiring additional consideration. I'll turn it over to the Police Chief, and he'll talk about some of those immediate action items.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. To the Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, thank you for the opportunity to present to you this morning. Before I get into these initiatives, I want to start out, I think it cannot be stated enough, the tragedies we have seen throughout the country and also what occurred here on May 30th. These have been significant incidents that, I believe, will change policing for the better. We have to take a look at ourselves, make sure we're doing things correctly. With that, just a little update, we're continuing to look locally at the May 30th, which started as a peaceful protest but quickly turned into an unlawful protest and riot. We're looking to hold those that were responsible for the rioting responsible, as we're looking to hold our police officers responsible. This is a little somewhat of an update. We do have an active internal affairs investigation that is ongoing. And we're also looking, as I mentioned, and holding the community members that were in violation of the law that night responsible illegally. There is currently a review by the prosecutor's office on the, on the officers' actions that night. This is something that I want to get done as soon as possible, but as I think you could appreciate, there's a number of reports and different things, and it takes time. We're trying to expedite it, but we have to make sure we're doing our due diligence and is doing correctly. Currently, one officer is off on leave at this point. And again, we'd like to have a determination from the prosecutor and have this internal investigation wrapped up as soon as possible. But we want to make sure we're thorough and complete with those investigations. To the slide deck, you'll see before you some of the things that we're looking to do is improve our use of force policy by explicitly banning chokeholds. This is something that I believe, again, law enforcement needs to look at and make sure it's not being taught. I was on a conference call with a number of chiefs, and they've mentioned some of these things, that they cannot be in law enforcement anymore. There could be exceptions, but as a practice, chokehold and implement as per policy. That's what we're looking to do with our use of force. Looking to improve our policy requiring officers de-escalate situations where possible by communicating with subject and maintaining distance and otherwise eliminate any need to use force. Trying to not use force in any encounter should be our number one objective. When the force is applied, it has to be done reasonably. And we need to make sure that we're doing it in the correct way. Require officers to give verbal warnings in all situations whenever possible before using deadly force. Requiring officers to exhaust all reasonable alternatives, including non-force and less lethal force options before resorting to deadly force. And improve our policy by requiring officers to intervene and stop excessive force used by other officers and report these incidents immediately to a supervisor. This came from a number of different community members. There's the A Can't Wait Out. We were working toward getting these things implemented into policy and making sure where it fits in, like our training, getting it into policy, so it's very clear of what the expectations are. And with that, I'll turn it over to, I believe, our City Attorney, who has the next slide. Listen.
Actually, Chief, I'll jump in before we the City Attorney. No problem. So there's a couple other things on this next slide that detail other reforms to our use of force policy, including updating the policy on banning officers from shooting at moving vehicles. And GRPD previously banned this practice, but we want to make sure that it's firmly rooted. We also are looking to make sure all uniformed officers have names on all uniforms while in public, to include events involving civil unrest. The chief has made a commitment to that. And in fact, there is an effort currently to make sure that on uniforms that don't, aren't always worn with uniforms traditionally, I'm sorry, with badges. Traditionally, there will be embroidered badges as well as names on those uniforms, so that is taken care of. In addition to that, we'll ensure that the Office of Oversight and Public Accountability reviews and releases a comprehensive report regarding the status of all prior community police relation studies, recommendations, and commitments. You may recall that at the last commission meeting, we talked about completing that within a 60-day time period. We heard back from the community that that needed to happen even faster than that. So we've made the commitment to having that report completed by July 7th. We'll also continue to make structural changes to the Grand Rapids Police Department to address recommendations made in the deployment study, the Lambert Traffic Study, and the 21st Century Policing Report. More civilian employees are needed in the public information and senior administrative roles. We'll also identify funding to expand the Office of Oversight and Public Accountability. City Manager has asked the Police Chief to assist in this funding initiative. Well, the chief will establish a community police advisory council, and they'll provide ongoing support and advice to the Police Chief on plans, strategies, and policies. And you'll hear a little bit more about that later. We also will increase and enhance training offered by the Office of Equity and Engagement and the Office of Oversight and Public Accountability related to equity, justice, implicit bias, and other related topics for city staff, including police. We recognize that training isn't the answer to everything, but training is an important resource that we use in order to help prepare our staff, including our police officers, to perform at the best of their ability. We'll also be working with economic development and our community's children, as well as the Office of Equity and Engagement and Public Accountability, to work with the business community to increase summer job opportunities for youth. And the manager already mentioned that. You'll hear more about that later in today's presentation. We'll collaborate with community to support programming that provides information, awareness, and resources to be an ally to address systemic and institutional racism, as well as work to improve resident engagement by creating more opportunities for underrepresented groups to promote safety and accountability and prevent crime. The Office of Equity and Engagement will host an event in partnership with OPA, the Office of Public Accountability, which will be led by subject matter experts regarding processing and healing from trauma and vicarious trauma related to racism and use of force. We recognize that the trauma, the pain associated with the history of policing in our country is real is something that our community, especially the black members of our community, have to deal with, have to reckon with. And we want to help to identify ways to process those things, recognizing that we won't hold that as a city forever, but we want to create the path so that we can work with community to get that done. Additionally, we create pathways for ongoing input and support from the community for the planned strategies and tactics of GRPD. So in addition to all of these things, we'll continue to complete the Office of Oversight and Public Accountability's strategic plan. And as you know, Commissioner, we were working on a strategic plan before COVID-19 hit, and it took a backseat to some of the other things we were working on, but we're working on digital ways to continue our strategic plan and to make sure that we get that done within the next 60 days so that we can have additional strategies to increase restorative justice programming, elevating community voice, and public safety engagement. And lastly, in this list, we'll ensure that the Police Department works with the Office of Oversight and Public Accountability, the Human Resources Department, the GRPS, local colleges, community organizations, and our labor groups to increase efforts in recruiting more diverse candidates. And with that, I'll turn it over to the City Attorney.
Good morning, Mayor, City Commission, City Manager. The city's mission is to elevate the quality of life of the city. An important part of that is creating change that establishes better relations between our community members and our police department. While our Law Department is guided by rules of professional conduct, we are also guided by personal conscience and the review of ourselves and our professional fears. The Department of Law is committed to providing advice that will assist the city in its desire to advocate justice and achieve positive outcomes for the city of Grand Rapids and this community. Several questions have come from the community and have been forwarded to our office by the Department of Public Oversight and Accountability, some of which are as follows. Open public meetings for collective bargaining. The city and all the labor units are required to meet our mandatory subjects of collective bargaining. Having public negotiations cannot be done without consent of both parties. Currently, contracts are in place until June 30th, 2022. We will share the idea with the labor groups and discuss. Changes to negotiation procedures cannot be unilaterally determined by management or the elected body. Second question, our concern was the subpoena power for the Civilian Appeals Board. The City Attorney's Office has been asked to provide a legal opinion on that matter, and we're working on that, and we'll provide a legal opinion within the next 30 days. Proposal by the Michigan Department of Civil Rights. The Michigan Department of Civil Rights has an ongoing investigation into complaints of discrimination by the Grand Rapids Police Department. No findings of wrongdoing to date have been made by the Michigan Department of Civil Rights. The City Attorney and staff continue to review this and will provide an update to the City Commission when we refuse it. Redirecting funding from the Police Department for economic development, housing, and other community programs. Our city charter under Title V, Section 18 states that not less than 32% of the general operating fund shall be appropriated for police services, while both a city tax and compact of 1.3% or more is in effect for corporations and residents and 0.65% or more for non-resident individuals. Now I'll turn this over for continued discussion from our city office, from our Chief Financial Officer, Marlon Fenton.
Thank you. Just to walk through what was approved for the fiscal year '21 final budget that we approved May 21st. Total police budget was $55.9 million. And then you'll see, we divided it up into the different funding sources that feed this budget. So you have general fund at $55.1 million, federal forfeitures, the capital improvement fund, and other grants. So when we talk about that 32%, that only applies to that general fund portion, the 55, or 55 million, 55.1 million. So currently, that is about 38.6% of the general fund. So it is north of that 32%. If, and it has been proposed, what would it be if we reduced the police budget down to that 32%? That would be the equivalent of 45.7 million or a $9.4 million reduction. And now I believe I am turning it back over to Brandon.
All right. So under planned staffing adjustments and budget amendments, what you see is that the Office of Oversight and Public Accountability is currently staffed with one full-time employee. That's me, the Director of Oversight, and we also are fortunate to have one full-time temp that provides administrative support and two part-time interns. Additional resources are required to assist with investigations, policy, community engagement, programming, and restorative justice needs. One planned adjustment is that one vacant civilian full-time employee will be transferred to OPA and funded by the Police Department. The total cost of that is approximately $129,000 annually. Think the chief will take the remainder of this one?
Yes, thank you, Brandon. For Office of Communications, GRPD and GRPD, additional non-sworn resources required to assist with communications and capacity. The planned adjustment would be one full-time employee, public information officer. The total cost of that is approximately $154,000. And then for the Grand Rapids Police Department, non-sworn resource required to assist with expanding your executive leadership capacity. The adjustment would be for one full-time employee, non-sworn chief of staff, total cost of approximately $195,000. And something that we, has been mentioned is Chief's Community Police Advisory Council. I have five commitments of the original six that we had committed to. In fact, I was on phone prior to this meeting, trying to assist one in. But it is my intention to add maybe as many as seven more individuals to this Community Police Advisory Council. I'm looking to have our first meeting still this month, possibly next week, if we can arrange it. So more will come of that, of those that have been committed to work with us.
Thank you, Chief. And so let's take the slides down at this point. So as you can see, the staff has been very, very busy in trying to not only listen. That is, that is where some communities are. They're in listening mode and empathizing with empathizing with community members, but also someone needs to stop sharing their screen. So the commission can see each other, but also to create action.
I don't see a shared screen, the city manager. I can't see you. Now I can't.
What about, okay, all right. So, 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 thank you, Commissioner. So we've been very, very busy. Not only listening, but also balancing that with the need to have very thoughtful action around policy as well as budget. And as you can see with the discussions around the adjustments that are made, this is after making significant reductions in the budget this past budget session, this budget season. The Police Department's budget has already been reduced over $1 million. And these, those recommended adjustments that were identified on Slide 14 will have to come from the Police Department reallocating funding, finding that need. And our plan is to continue to do that. And by the time that we meet during our next commission meeting on July the 7th, we will bring forth budget amendments that will add that resource in the Oversight Office that will enhance the need to have more transparent communications in the Police Department consistent with 21st century, but also consistent with our overall community and engagement communication strategy corporately. And then finally, to have the additional senior-level staff member in the Police Department that is non-sworn. So I will pause at this time and see if there are questions for the staff.
Thank you, City Manager. I'll make a few comments, and then I see Commissioner Moody has his hand up, so I'll turn to Commissioner Moody next. So, so a couple of things. First, I want to thank the City Manager and Chief Payne and Mr. Davis and the City Attorney for this update and all of the work that you all have been doing to bring these forward as quickly as possible. I agree that this is a step forward, knowing that there's still a lot of work to be done in the months and years ahead. But I do think that these recommendations capture a lot of the feedback that I've heard from community leaders as I've talked to them and listened to them, as well as from many of us around this table, as well as our partner organizations, including, you know, LinkUp and UCC and NAACP. So we all know, but I'm not sure everyone knows that these organizations have been really strong partners with us over the last several years as we worked on police reform and reimagining policing in our city, as well as larger racial equity initiatives that we've taken on here at the city. And I see them as continuing to be key partners in the work that we do. And we need to have a commitment to making sure that we're working in partnership with community as we move forward. I also want to take a moment and acknowledge some of the calls around reallocation of funds. I know that that's been a conversation many of us have also had. And I want to be clear that we've had a lot of these conversations over the past. And even as a body and in our budget, we've allocated funds to add social workers to the Police Department and create our homeless outreach team. And we've made investments in our neighborhoods of focus. For those who don't know, we've been in active conversations for well over a year with the county, talking about how do we better respond to individuals experiencing a mental health crisis or substance use crisis, so that we are diverting them from jail or from the emergency room and really responding in a more effective way. And that work is ongoing. Unfortunately, and I've said this before and I said it during the budget process, with everything I'm hearing from the state and with current budget projections, I expect that over the next several months, we are going to have to make additional cuts to our budget. And so that is going to be a conversation as we look at cuts. I wish, I hope we're wrong. I hope that our revenue projections come in much higher than we are expecting. And if that's the case, I'll be the first one to say that those dollars should be committed to investments in our neighborhoods of focus and in community services and community engagement and the Office of Oversight and Accountability. But I think it's premature at this point, not knowing the impact of this current recession and what that's going to do to our budget. Just a couple more things I want to add and just weigh in on my support for. One is I strongly support the City Manager's directive to add capacity to the Office of Oversight and Accountability, and I hope that happens immediately. Secondly, I would like to request formal updates to the City Commission. So I know Mr. Davis talked about having the report done on past recommendations by July 7th. I would like that added. We have a City Commission meeting that day. So I would like that added to our City Commission agenda so that we can all get briefed and updated. And then I also would like ongoing updates. So I know we have goals set out, things to accomplish in the next 30 days and 60 days. So I'd also request that at one of our August meetings, so we have a meeting on the 11th and the 25th, that we add an item at committee of the whole to get a full update on progress made from both the police chief and Mr. Davis. And then last, I'll just say, related to communications, I know that's also been a conversation all of us have had at length around our tables, and I would like to better understand what that looks like and how we're going to improve, not just communications, but engagement, community engagement, to make sure that individuals in the community are actively engaged, but also aware of the work that's being done and that they can engage in that work in a meaningful way. So those are my initial requests and thoughts. And again, thank you for the presentation. And now I will turn it to Commissioner Moody.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good morning to everybody. Perhaps I thank you for the report that was given, but I have two questions. One, I noticed on the report it mentioned the speed of trust. I would like to know what were the outcomes of speed of trust? How successful was it? And where are we going from there in terms of speed of trust with the department? The other thing is that I need a little bit more clarity on the general fund appropriations. I mean, I know she just broke it down in terms of 32%, but can I get a little bit more of clarity on what the plan is with that, if anything's going to be done?
So let's start with the development of improving our competency around trust, accountability, and equity. And I don't think I specifically referenced the speed of trust, but I know the department has done so. And the chief can come on and say where they are in terms of fulfilling that endeavor. But what we're talking about is new additional training and engagement around other matters that are even more critical conversations around systemic racism, institutionalizing individual as well. And that's a little bit different from the speed of trust conversations that we've had. And so perhaps Mr. Davis or Ms. Stout can also come on and add a little bit more clarity around that. But Chief, can you answer the specific question, where are you on the speed of trust work that you've done?
Like Mr. City Manager brought that up for a reason. And that was because some time ago, I had mentioned to the previous chief about the program to enhance the department with multicultural intelligence in terms of talking about where the next moves are. I think that it's a cultural thing that we need to deal with. But I just needed to know, was speed of trust successful or were the outcomes, I don't think it's successful.
Chief Payne?
Yeah, good. Thank you, Commissioner Moody. The measure of that success is varied. We still have people who are still communicating with the people that they were paired with. Quite frankly, there were some who never even fulfilled the commitment, where they fulfilled the commitment, but their relationships died off. If you recall, that was an initiative, and it basically was to try and get people to communicate. And to measure it individually, it would be difficult. All I can say is only I know there are still relationships that exist from that initiative.
Yep. So let me also add, so this past week, I've had several several conversations or trainings with our top management team, all the managers in the organization, to include the sworn, as well as the deputy chiefs, and I think the chief had some other captains there that were, they were not speed of trust conversations. They were about race and racism and race relations. And we are continuing to have that throughout our entire workforce. And there will be a similar type of training for the Police Department that, again, that I'm asking for, this is the last time I'm going to ask if Mr. Davis will turn his camera on and Ms. Stout will turn her camera on and add and offer a little bit more clarity. Thank you about what we, what we plan to do. Thank you. Need that lifeline.
I was just waiting for the cue to turn it on. Thank you, City Manager. Hello, everyone. So from a broader perspective, not exclusively to the Police Department, is having deeper conversations. So tomorrow, we've transitioned, we already kicked off our equity foundations for every single staff person in the city to go through, to move along on their equity journey, right? And so everyone is in a different spot. So to create some shared understanding, some shared language and concept, you know, the difference between equality and equity and race and why we lead with racial justice here at the city. So we're doing, with the help of Hall Young, we are doing virtual trainings that are ongoing throughout the year. Of course, I'm updating them as we go and as events unfold. And then having more in-depth conversation that the City Manager talked about. And so really having, you know, around privilege about institutional racism and how it works together for systemic racism and what we can do about it. Because equity requires action, and every single department has power to make change. And so we're going to have not just those discussions, but trainings and give skills and resources and normalize talking about this because it's so critically important. And then working with our performance manager, Allison, etc., to really track and create some measurements that are already in the strategic plan, but really elevating those in a new and different way. So that's broadly what we're doing, but it's going to be a lot of formats because I really strongly believe that you have to create multiple onraps unto this movement. And so they're going to be virtual. We're going to, using safe, you know, physical distancing. How do we come together and have conversations while we distance? How do we read and discuss? How do we be a thought partner and strategic partner as directors, to the directors that want change as well, to get their action plans together. And so we're going to do a variety of strategies to continue to embed this in the DNA of what we do as a city organization. Thank you.
All of this is being done in-house?
Commissioner, I didn't hear your question?
We're doing this in-house. We're not contracting out with any companies to do this or services.
It's good. Thank you for your question. It's going to be a combination of both. We don't have the bandwidth to do all of these conversations. And so, yes, we have some resources to release an RP, professional services to assist with this. Good question. So that should be out beginning of the fiscal year.
Yep. And this is in addition to the specific Police Department training that they have as part of their requirements to maintain their certifications. And I don't know if the chief is able to add anything else, or what's being done internally in the department.
Yes, sir. Part of our requirement for Kalia is that we do that type of training, multicultural diversity training at least once a year. We have actually done roll call training in diversity that we put out to officers already this year, but we're looking to do more of that training throughout the year.
Thank you.
And then lastly, on the question you had about the budget, I think it was Slide 13. And so, Commissioner, all I'm prepared to do at this point is what I propose, and that is to find a way to fund the three positions that we identified, and that's about a half a million dollar adjustment to the Police Department's budget. And so they're working on that. And as I mentioned before, should we be successful in being able to adjust their budget, what you will see is a budget amendment come forth at your next meeting on July the 7th to fund those three positions.
Thank you, sir. That's what I needed to hear.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll now turn to Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Manager Washington and Mr. Davis, Ms. Hitchcock, Chief Payne, Ms. Clarence, and Ms. Stout for the presentation on this morning. I'm very appreciative of all of the information that has been brought forward, the updates, and am pleased to see the movement in the direction of not just hearing what the community has to say, but actually responding to it. And so very, very appreciative of that. I just, one of the things I want to put out there is that the word has been used, I think, a couple of times on this morning, and that is really the importance of the opportunity that's ahead of us, and that is really to reimagine policing in our city. And I have very much taken on a mindset of wanting to be a part of the reimagining of our department, simply because I know that it is what's needed for such a time as this. And so I'm also reminded of, and I'm thankful, again, for the addition of Mr. Davis and his role as serving as Director of Accountability and Oversight. And I took some time earlier, like actually last week, to look at, to go back to the National Association for Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement website. And just a good reminder, I would, for my colleagues, just if you get the opportunity, kind of go back and take a look at that. It really speaks to, you know, why Mr. Davis is here and doing what he's doing and the importance and the role that they play in helping us to reimagine our police force and our policing in Grand Rapids. City Manager Washington, I will be the first to say that I would like to see us actually get to a point where, and by the way, I can appreciate the efforts that have been made thus far in wanting to increase the staffing for Mr. Davis and his office, but based on what's happening nationally with other departments and other cities, I would like to see us get to a point where we are where his, with that particular department, is anywhere between 2% and 3% of the Police Department budget. Right now, that number, based on my calculations, based on the $55 million general fund budget number that Ms. Clarence gave us, would be anywhere between 1.1 and 1.65 million dollars, which would be the budget assigned to Mr. Davis's office to really carry out his work in the most effective manner. And so I would look to push for that, and we'll also look to have more substantive conversations with my colleagues to see how they feel about that. Also want to, when talking about the this hard number of 32%, I took the opportunity to take a look at some old press clippings from back in 1995 when this really became law. You know, prior to that, there was, I think, a moving target in terms of what the budget was for policing. And it was 1995 when it was an actual ballot initiative called Safety 95, and it was established then, by the way, by just 704 votes, was the victory for this, that there would be a, every year, 32% would be the budget lock-in for police. And so I would like to see us perhaps get back to that number, to get back to a 32% budget lock-in. I think that would be a good first step. As has been mentioned, per Ms. Clarence, right now, we're at, I think, 38.6, and that would be a reduction of about $9.4 million. But I think it would be a very effective first step to get us back to that 32% number compared to the current 38.6. Again, this is something I'd like to further discuss with my colleagues on the commission. And lastly, I want to make mention that there is, at the end of the day, with all that's going on, I think one of the best things that we can do is just work in a very strategic way to, again, continue to look at how do we reimagine policing and law enforcement. And I will say that one of the things I've always been very, very passionate about is how can we find ways to make the job, make the job easier for our police officers? And I think it's fair to say that there are some calls that our officers should never have to respond to. And I think it's fair to say that there are some calls that our officers should never have to respond to. And some of those include ones that involve substance abuse, domestic violence, mental health. And so in this opportunity to reimagine policing in our city, again, those are jobs that, those are calls that our department should not be making simply because there's always the potential for something to go awry. And so we need to continue down the path of perhaps having specialists. And I know nationally, what has been happening is healthcare workers or emergency response teams should be the ones who are handling these incidents. And so this is not, not as if we're, you know, looking to, to delve a whole lot into starting something new. These are things that are already happening. And I think it would be wise for us as a city to follow that lead. Because we need to continue in our effort also to look back, look back. I'm reminded that it's easy, I think, for people to just, you know, perhaps make decisions based on what's happening now. What happened obviously with the, the, the death, the murder of George Floyd. But if we look back and we better understand the history of policing, there's an opportunity to, right now, to perhaps right some of those wrongs. And so we need to, I think, enhance everything from conflict interrupters and restorative justice. We've talked about that. We've moved, we're, we're moving in that direction, but we need to enhance that. I will again mention the cure of violence and the, this opportunity to, to have available to us an evidence-based effort that has paid dividends in other parts of the country and other parts of the world. And ultimately, we have to remember, in all of the chatter and all of the conversations that are taking place right now, we have to just keep in mind what, you know, what, what crime is. And I want to suggest, especially now as people are throwing out and, and are quick to throw out black-on-black crime. I know that that's something that we could spend hours talking about. But I want to suggest that crime is a component of poverty, opportunity, and proximity. And we need to keep that in mind. Because if we're talking about black and black crime, we can also talk about white on white crime, talk about Latinx on Latinx crime. It's about proximity. And so I think that we have a opportunity ahead of us that we can pull off the, what some would say is impossible, and that is to reimagine our police department. And that's what I want to be part of. That's what I'm committed to. And I want to do all that I can to make those things a reality. Lastly, I have a question for Chief Payne, and that is, Chief, I'd like to know, what is, what has been the selection process for your Community Police Advisory Council?
Yes, sir. When we started this, taking input, Mr. Davis provided some names. I provided names. And again, this is not, I, I wish I could announce everyone that, and it's a final, but we're looking to add more people to it. In fact, I received a text from a community member while during this meeting, asking, and I want to have discussions with that person to add people. What I'm looking for are people, I'm not looking for pro-police. I'm not looking for anti-police. I'm looking for people who are willing to sit down at a table and have tough conversations, be open-minded and respectful to everyone's views, and to help us shape the way this police department is looked. We'll provide education, but we also need to be educated from the community. So we're looking for people across the spectrum to be involved in this board.
Great. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Commissioner. All right, others who want to weigh in or have questions?
I'm going to ask, Mayor, before you do, Chief Payne, just keep your camera on, since most of this is about the police department.
Yeah, thanks. All right, Commissioner Lanier?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city staff, for the presentation. I will start with the elements regarding the youth employment portion. And then I have some more specific questions or thoughts about the police reform portion. So I think, thank you, City Manager, for the update regarding the number of jobs you've been able to secure through partnerships with local companies. I, I think that what we're trying to accomplish, and I think this about both police reform as well as this element regarding youth employment, seem to me as though they, they're a little bit more complex than what we are responding to. I think, you know, these, these responses, in my opinion, require a little bit more time than I feel like we're giving. Because I, you know, when I think about youth employment, obviously, I'm an advocate and supporter of that. Last year through SAFE, we financially supported three different organizations for youth employment, for summer youth employment more specifically, for the same targeted age group through partnerships with two community organizations as well as our community's children. So I am very supportive of, of youth employment. But I am concerned that at a time when many companies have laid off and furloughed employees, that as we are bringing, as they, as they're partnering to bring on employees to their places of employment, that we potentially could be displacing the parents of the kids that we're talking about hiring. Because many of those positions that were laid off were low, low salary leveled positions. And I'm assuming that with a lot of the youth employment, that those would be the types of positions that they will be asked to take part in. Though I am obviously supportive of, of the work. I think we have had, the City of Grand Rapids, a number of partnerships with community organizations to do this work. And as you are seeking to recruit students, I think, because many organizations have been funded through the city to provide youth employment opportunities over several years, that they likely will have a, that's the right word, they may have a surplus of contacts because of their existing programs. You know, I'm thinking about the Hispanic Center, the Urban League, the NAACP, the Center for Community Transformation, Steeple Town, Realism is Loyalty, Seeking Safety, LifeQuest, Grand City. Those are some of the organizations that we have partnered with already. So this is their work. And I think as we're talking about bringing 1,000 employees, though temporary, into the city, that instead of us trying to do that work ourselves, that we would partner with these organizations who have done this. And maybe we could swap people from one program to the next. So if last year they were participating in the community, the Center for Community Transformation, maybe now they can go to Steeple Town. And we probably need to work on a location for them while we're at it. But, so I just think those are some of the things that may help us so that we're not trying to recruit almost half of our existing employee numbers this quickly without the support of others. And then obviously, we have partners like Michigan Works who are in this business and could potentially provide us with additional support, training, and things of that nature. So my thought is, when it, when it's, when we're considering something the size of, I think, $2 million, when we're looking at all 1,000 employees, that how we would typically make this decision is through an A3 process. So we can kind of see where the pros and cons are and what potentially could be unintended consequences. So I, you know, I know that staff is working on this diligently, and I know that it's summer already. And I'm not sure, like, when the light switch to we're going to try and recruit from 40 to 1,000. But it would, I think it would be worth the time spent trying to determine how to do this best so that we can have a successful program as opposed to trying to implement something and then having results, unintended results.
Sure, if you want to.
Thank you, Commissioner. And my comment was a preview of the next section. So many, many of the issues you identified, we're, we're prepared to talk about some of that in the next section of the presentation. But all of those are valid considerations and making sure that we are collaborating with community-based organization. And the staff has attempted to do that. What we, I just want to be clear, though, that the only, of the, of the thousand jobs, the, the funding for those positions are, there's only 50 of them that are funded by the city. So much of the resources that are, that are being devoted to is coming from employers, and we fully recognize the need. We ask them, do not prioritize this over essential staffs that your, your organization needs. We don't want this to compete with essential workers and engineers and accountants and, and those programs. So those companies that have made, are both companies as well as individuals, there's individuals who have donated and, and donated contributions or will sponsor employment, I should say, have done so based on their fiscal sustainability within their organization. So we have not tried to prioritize this over their, their normal labor issues, workforce issues, payroll issues. This is in addition to what they're able to do. And some employers have said that they, they would love to support it and could not do it. The only thing I would add, and, and I, again, I don't want to get too much into it because we, we do have a section of the presentation where we'll more robustly talk about it, is that what it, what it, what our response is, is based on the moment. And the fact that we have so many youth activities and amenities that are not available, have not been available. We're trying to think of ways to positively engage youth. In my opinion, the, the city's effort compared to other cities, mid-size, large-size communities has, has come short. What has been done in talking to some of those other partners, they also have had funding challenges. And so this was a need, is a need, continues to be a need, and, and we were trying to be as responsive to it as we could in the moment. And certainly, this is not a one-time effort. We are going to try to make sure that this is something that is sustainable moving forward. But I don't think employers have been challenged in this manner before. And there, and this is not something that, that the city solely desired to do. I, I, I do not want to be viewed as the city solely seeking credit for this. Businesses have asked, they've come to us in the wake of May, June, May, the very next day, the very morning, while they were picking stuff off the ground. They said, how can we help? We are not police reform experts. We are not law enforcement. We want to find a way to engage in a very productive manner. And of course, as being part of businesses, the way that we can do it, the, the conversation I remember last summer is that we needed more businesses to come to the table to help us keep our youth positively engaged. And the quote I kept hearing, when we're having the gun violence, nothing stops a bullet like a buck, our job. And that was, that, that replayed over and over in my mind. And so the moment seemed right to engage them and, and see what we could do now. And of course, we're going to learn and we're going to improve. And, and again, much, much of that, it will be discussed in the next section. But I just wanted to, to acknowledge what you were saying, and, and you're exactly right. It needs to be carefully done with community. But just like we're expediting police reform, I think if we're going to have that same sense of urgency around that, I think criminal justice as well as economic justice, let's look at it more holistically. Because all of this stuff cannot be solved by the police department.
Thank you for those comments, and I don't disagree at all. Actually, it's a good segue to my next area, which is about the police reform. And, you know, I think racism is a, and should be named as a health and economic crises, which I think as we are looking at the recommendations for police reform, that's the lens that I think we should be considering. So I, I, I don't disagree with your comments about youth employment, which is why last year, you know, we were advocating for that through the work of, of SAFE. I do also feel like an A3 would be helpful in understanding the recommendations that are coming through the police reform recommendations, because I think it's an at-a-glance way of looking to see the costs of things, the changes that are being considered. And I, I think it, it, it helps to see what potentially the unintended, unintended consequences could be. I think one of the things that in my conversations and in the research that I've done over the past few weeks that I think is missing, that I think is glaringly missing, is a strategic plan from the police department itself. And I know that, I'm not exactly sure, Chief Payne, how long you've been the chief, but I do think that for me, it would be helpful to hear your vision of what you would like to do with this department. It would be helpful to hear from you and your leadership team, you and your officers. Because I think as, as, and I've had these conversations for many years with relatives who are in law enforcement, friends that are in law enforcement, as well as here at this table, that as external recommendations are coming to the commission and for the police department to consider and implement, what's missing frequently is the voice of the police department. And, and, but when I'm having one-on-one conversations, I'm hearing them have suggestions and oftentimes agreeing with some of the recommendations that are swirling in the community. But I, I don't think that we have engaged law enforcement enough to be able to, at, at least from my perspective, to kind of hear from them on paper. And in some ways, I think that lies at their feet, and not just you, Chief Payne, but the entire department, the union leadership, et cetera. Because I do think that some of these recommendations are more challenging to implement when the people who are expected to make the change feel as though the changes that are, they're expected to make weren't changes that they were considering or that they are interested in. And so then you have this push into a system that, and then you don't have the change that you're looking for. And in lies kind of a repeat of, of the same process six months, a year later. And so I think I would like to see that from the chief of police, you know, Brandon mentioned his strategic planning process was on hold. And you're absolutely right, Brandon, to be considering as a new department, what your goals are. And I think the chief of police, as a relatively new chief, should be doing the exact same thing. You know, some of the, the recommendations that have been presented, you know, and as well as some of the recommendations that we've been reading about and hearing about, I'll just kind of mention some of these because I'm not sure where we stand with some of them. I don't know whether I support or, or if I'm in opposition of them as well. Because I do think that we need a little bit more research to understand what works here. To the mayor's point, I think that since I've been a commissioner, we've been working tirelessly on, and not to say that they didn't prior to that, but my knowledge is since I've been a commissioner, we've been working tirelessly on police and community reform for quite a few years. And we have quite a few studies. We have quite a few recommendations. And so to, to, and we've implemented quite a few of those recommendations. So I know we, we're not ignoring happening in the, in the community. And we have been engaging the community in some of those recommendations and, and that have been implemented. But here are some of the things that, that I have not heard much about, that I've been seeing. The no-knock warrants and raids. And, and I guess I'm suggesting these or asking about these because I want to know if anyone has been researching these or if it's being researched. But, so the no-knock warrants and raids, the training for shooting to kill versus shooting to apprehend, the, the lawsuit settlements connected to lose everybody?
I, I couldn't hear you. We can hear you now. We can't see you, but we couldn't hear you for a moment. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yep. And, oh, I, I see Commissioner Lanier again. Can you hear us okay, Commissioner?
Now I can. Can you hear me now?
We can. We can.
Okay. It just went, everybody went frozen. So it's probably on my end. Sorry about that. I didn't move. So where did, where did I leave off, Mayor?
You, the last we heard was the question around training related to shooting to apprehend, not kill. And then, and then you were cut off shortly after that. And then, uh, and then you were cut off shortly after that.
Okay, so the next one was, um, surrounding lawsuits, um, and disclosure, um, related to personnel who may be, um, involved in lawsuits that the city loses or that we settle. Um, and I think Commissioner Jones mentioned some of the, the mental health, um, elements. And I think, you know, we're hearing some of that. So as I'm looking at some of the positions that we are recommending, you know, I'm curious to know if, if we've researched any of those elements. Um, I continue to harp on, um, recruitment, um, of diverse pools and, um, how it's important that as we're recruiting, that we're not recruiting, um, one and two at a time, but we're trying to recruit in cohorts. Um, and so if we take a cohort, um, that looked like the people we're trying to recruit from location to location to location, from school to school, wherever that is, we will be more likely to have the results that we're aiming for. And I think we saw that when we had a targeted recruitment strategy for women. Um, and I have quite a few other things, but I'll stop there. I think, um, the biggest piece for me is regarding the A three, um, and hearing from the chief, um, um, his strategic plan or his thoughts about how he's going to do this work, um, and making sure that, um, whatever it is that we are going, whatever process it is that we're going to go through, that we're bring, we're bringing everybody on board, um, so that we can make sure that we have the results that we're looking to have.
Great, thanks, thanks Commissioner, those are all really good points. Uh, so I'll, I'll let the chief, uh, respond and then I'll turn to, uh, Commissioner Repart.
Yeah, thank you Mayor, um, and thank you Commissioner Lanier. You bring up a lot of, um, good points. Um, one thing I will say about the strategic plan, we were in the process of developing that. Um, I think most of the work has been done and then COVID nineteen hit and that really set us behind. And then of course, um, in the process of that, um, we're still assessing, looking at the May thirtieth civil unrest, so. But I do believe the majority of that work has been done. Uh, but I'll have to check with DC Kittle, who was spearheading the strategic plan on what we were looking to do moving forward. Uh, but that's a good question. No, cover a few of these real quick, no-knock warrants, that's not a practice we, we use here at the police department, Grand Rapids PD. That, uh, that is something that we, uh, we employ something called surrounding call-out, where we surround, make clear announcements and get people to come out. Um, so no-knock warrants is not a practice that we normally would use. Um, I'll say that only because not normal. Give you an example, a hostage situation, it may be necessary to utilize that, but that is very rare. Um, it has not come up, so no-knock warrants are not a practice that we use. If you would like, I, uh, I can provide some background. I've listed some of your other concerns and interests of time and provide you with answers to those.
Chief, I, I think in the, I think we need to take whatever time we need to do today.
Absolutely.
We want to have another commission meeting before the seventh. And what I need is, uh, to leave this meeting with some clarity on what this body, you would support or not support, so that when we come back on the seventh, we won't be misaligned. So please, uh, if the mayor is okay, I would like to, uh, be as clear as possible on what we're able to respond to today and what would take more time. So there's other things that you can offer inside to that.
Sure, absolutely. The shooting to kill as opposed to apprehend, that is not a practice that would be a standard that we, uh, any law enforcement would have, and here's the reason why. Um, the only time we are authorized to use our weapons are in a deadly force encounter, uh, to shoot at someone. So just to apprehend them, that would not be authorized use of, to shoot at somebody. Um, they either get away or we catch them some other way. Um, the only time we are authorized to use our weapons is a deadly force encounter. That's when, um, there's a threat of great bodily harm or injury or death to an officer or somebody else. Um, but, um, to shoot at somebody just to apprehend them would be a violation of policy and very frankly, law. Uh, the lawsuit settlements, I think that's something that probably should be answered by the attorneys on what can be disclosed or not disclosed. So I would have to ask legal to answer that part of it. Uh, the mental health el- element, um, you're absolutely right. Uh, we have CIT training, uh, critical incident, um, training that all of our officers have gone through. We're in the process of looking at, uh, working with the group to establish a, um, immediate care facility for officers, um, uh, for those that are experiencing those type of, of incidents. Uh, arrest is not our number one go-to with that, is to get people help. And Commissioner Jones mentions, uh, something he's heard in the community about the domestic violence. Uh, in responding to that, by law, we are required to respond. And that's one of those, you shall make arrests if there's issues of domestic violence. But I certainly believe that there could be another, um, resource that could, uh, when there's no violence involved and it's just a domestic situation. I believe maybe that's what you're speaking of, uh, where, um, those other resources could be utilized. Something that was not mentioned earlier was our formation of the hot team in collaboration with the fire department, uh, and that's dealing with the, uh, primarily the homeless community. We are committed to that. We will continue to work, um, with the hot team and be a part of it, along with the fire department, and like to add more resources to it, whether it's social work, mental health, uh, substance abuse. So those are the commitments on that issue. Um, and Commissioner Lanier, recruitment and diversity, uh, we just had a meeting last week and we're continuing to meet with, um, officers, people of color within the department to get their feedback on, number one, why they came here and what strategies could we use to get more people of color? So we're divert, um, we reflect our community and also retention to make sure we're keeping those officers. So, um, we're meeting with that, with our community engagement unit, they're spearheading that. And you're right, we did have a concerted effort to increase our female, um, numbers. And I, we've accomplished that. Uh, we won't stop, we'll continue, um, hiring those best candidates. But, uh, our community engagement unit is, um, spearheading the recruitment process as far as diversity.
Thank you, thank you so much Chief for, um, your response. I, I do have a follow-up, um, question and another comment, um, regarding the, um, shooting to apprehend versus shooting to kill piece. Um, you mentioned that that isn't the practice of the department, um, unless, um, and, and you talked a little bit about when you all would be authorized to, um, use your weapon. So I'm curious to know, you know, recently in, in national news, we kind of saw this story unfold where, um, there, they were apprehending a suspect and he, um, acquired, um, through their physical, um, altercation, the taser of one of the officers. And does that, you know, I don't see tasers as being, um, um, a tool that results in, um, life, a, a life-threatening situation. Um, but it landed with this suspect being murdered. So I'm curious to know if that same type of an incident, does a suspect having a weapon, taking the weapon from an officer like a taser, would it result? And I, obviously you can't speak directly to it, but just in general, is that a part of your use of force? Would that be considered a time where, um, the officer could use his weapon? And then the other is, um, um, this is a totally different thing that I forgot to mention regarding the oversight, um, department's positions. Um, one of the, the, at least is my understanding, one of the requests through some of what we've been receiving from community regarding, um, adding more positions to the oversight department, that, um, the need for data analysis is important. Um, and I know we, um, recently added another position to the PD for data analysis. So I think there are two people doing that work now. And so I'm curious to know if, 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 if Brandon, um, Mr. Davis, if he sees that as, as, you know, a, a tool that he would recommend, um, be added to his department? Because, because I didn't quite understand, um, your investigators, does that also mean they would do data analysis? So maybe you can, if you can bring some clarity to that, so I can fully understand that too, thank you.
Yeah, if I could, your first question about, um, deadly force being used in those type of encounters, um, I am not as well-versed on what occurred, I believe it was in Atlanta. I can speak in general though, um, a taser could potentially be used to, um, subdue an officer if they were, taser was used on it. But again, it would have to be the reasonableness of the deadly force if the officer elected to, um, take it. Um, whether or not they felt their life was in jeopardy or someone else's life is, in, was in jeopardy. As, so it's the objective reasonableness of any time deadly force is used. Uh, so it's, it, it'd be difficult for me to say yes or no. If someone took your taser, would you be offering, yeah, of course? It really depends on the circumstances.
Yep, so, so Chief can I also add, I, I think Commissioner in recommended, um, we will go towards addressing at least some of the concerns, where we are going to improve the policy on de-escalation whenever it's possible, as well as require the officers to give verbal commands, uh, using whenever, before using deadly force and use less lethal alternatives. And so I think that's the intent. Um, now whether or not, um, that will happen in every situation, I, I think you, you know, it's, you have to be concerned about officer safety as well as, uh, public, the safety of the public. You may have recalled another incident that I can't recall, the other city, there are so many reportings where the officer exercised so much restraint, uh, where he could have used, recently used, uh, not in this city, I want to clarify, but another city, could have used, um, deadly force, but he was ended up shot in the hand and, and exercised a lot of restraint. I think that happened, uh, yesterday. And so I think we need to look at all that. And, uh, we, what I'm asking is to give us the time to review our policies. What I've asked for in terms of, uh, the sixty-day, uh, the chief coming back and looking at it, i- is, 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 um, things that they can do operational. I'm not, we're not going to do anything that, matter of fact, these are things the chief should be doing, regardless if we're talking about it here today. He's the chief of the city of Grand Rapids. He should be able to change his policies and we not have to vote up or down if there are good things to do. That's his job, that is his job as a chief law enforcement officer for the city. And to also make sure that he's protecting the public, but also his offices as well. Because we cannot, uh, allow our officers to work in very unsafe conditions. What I, what I wanted to convey here is that those operational things, we are, we are, we did not need, I did not need, uh, a four, four votes to tell us to look, start looking and changing operational, uh, things. We, we are going to do that, whether there is support from this body or not. We're going to look at making those operational changes. What we do need from this body is on those big policy issues regarding funding that we've talked about, as well as, uh, these other legislative and legal issues. Uh, tho- those, those are matters where I cannot make those decisions without governing body, um, direction and support. But operationally, the chief is fully committed, I, I've, I've directed him to do that and that is what they intend to do. If there are other things that are not on this list that you would like us to see do this morning, uh, in, in the next few days, that I am interested in that and would like to give that consideration as well.
Thank you, City Manager. All right, I, I have Commissioner Repart with his hand up and Commissioner O'Connor. So I'll do, uh, Commissioner Repart and then I'll turn to Commissioner O'Connor.
Yeah, thanks Mayor. And boy, I sure hope that we can safely be face-to-face the next time that we're together in July. That, that would be really great. But I, uh, I do, I just affirm the work that the staff has done, just really burning it up to engage and to file these things, to complete them. And just like you said, City Manager, that stuff doesn't have to come back to us for, for approval. So I appreciate the swift action on that, the solid timelines on that. Uh, and then also today for the realization that, you know, we're going to get those reports at certain dates. So I also affirm the ideas that our partner, you know, Linkup and the N W C P and U C C. And I'm glad that, uh, the, uh, staff is looking into those recommendations. I think that now is a time where options should be on the table and we should be evaluating and looking at all of them. And so I appreciate that work. I think that, um, like Commissioner Jones said, for the Office of Public Oversight and Accountability, if three percent is the gold standard, while we might not be able to get immediately, I think that I advocate that we plan toward that number, um, so that, uh, we know what the end goal is and what, what the ideal situation is. I'm also with Commissioner Jones that this is a time to reimagine, uh, what public safety looks like. That's an awkward conversation, uh, it's an uncomfortable conversation, requires a lot of humility. Uh, I believe that it's going to require co-creation from the community and the department. And I also think that to some degree, there's not a whole lot of re- re-imagination possible unless we do look at that charter provision of thirty-two percent. And so I think that, uh, it's imperative that we have a discussion about that. In the memo, it says, you know, if we're going to do anything around that, more discussions are needed with the city commission on the implications of any budget reallocation. So I don't know if this is at our next meeting or when it is, but I think that, um, we, I would love to see a presentation on what we accomplished in the budget approval process, what we accomplished by these, um, new positions that were added, as well as some reshifting for the public of oversight and accountability, as well as what Commissioner Lanier said, these other things that we already have approved, like a trauma specialist, I believe it was two data analysis, analysis last year. Um, because those are part of that reimagining and the hot team, you know, so all of that could be maybe presented side-by-side. And then I think we need to have a public discussion about it. I think it's, uh, it's, it's, it's on us to, to do that at this moment if we're going to appropriately reimagine it, uh, what public safety looks like in our city. And so I just affirm that and, uh, and I, maybe we, maybe we can have that at our, at our next meeting on the seventh of July.
All right, thank you Commissioner. Uh, City Manager, did you want to respond to that or?
I think, uh, those conversations are, are on target. I have, um, I, I would support continuing to give accountability of those resources that you provided in the budget. Matter of fact, I just talked to the police chief, uh, last week about the, uh, victim assistance trauma specialist. I'd like that person to be properly introduced to the community, so the community knows who that person is, integrated with our other wellness efforts internally, uh, and shared as a community resource. And so that, that's part of the communication effort that we shared. And we have, we have very well-trained officers, uh, in that department and, and, and with this need for robust communication in this social distance, physical distance environment, we, we need a communications professional to help us with that. The, the chief in the department needs, needs help. I've heard it with countless groups, uh, to say that we need to improve the way that we create awareness and engage. I've heard it from our internal team, uh, even, even the chief himself. And so I look forward to talking about the resources that you've given, as well as how these other requested resources might be able to, to help.
Thank you, City Manager. Uh, Commissioner O'Connor?
Thank you Mayor. Uh, um, yeah, I'm grateful to be having this conversation. And, uh, I think it's, uh, and I appreciate the comments of all my colleagues. Uh, there's a lot of wisdom to be gained from, from all of you. Um, I, I do appreciate the comments of, uh, Commissioner Lanier as it relates to, um, uh, kind of the planning efforts in the department and how, uh, those, uh, those are going. And I'm, I'm, you know, I know that those have been underway for a while. And I'm interested in, you know, given recent events, how, uh, how the department internally is going to respond to some of those. And, uh, I just want to make sure that, you know, that, and I know sometimes people need to just be told what to do, but I think, you know, as, as a lot of these conversations go, I want to make sure that there's buy-in, uh, so that when things get implemented, they're implemented with fidelity and that, um, you know, that there is buy-in from the people actually doing the job every day as well. And so it is a two-way street with this communication. And so I hope that there is, uh, and I'm sure that there's been, um, you know, communication with all levels of, uh, of staff in our police department, from our, you know, our officers on the street to our sergeants and our captains and, and, you know, the various, uh, roles and responsibilities that our officers take. And so I want to just make sure that that, that conversation continues. And so I want to just make sure that that, that conversation continues, that as the, you know, the needs and desires of the community are presented, that, you know, the professionals that do the job, they are, they are good police officers. We have a ton of great men and women doing the job every day. And they, they hold themselves to a high standard. And I want to make sure that, you know, they, they, they don't like it when other people make them look bad. And they want to do the job well and, and respect the community. And so I just want to make sure that we have this, the dialogue is, is a two-way street. So that when, whatever changes we come up with, there's buy-in from both sides. And another just brief item, I talked to the City Manager briefly about, but, you know, I think a concern or a comment that we hear a lot from the community is we wish more folks who do the job lived in the city. And, you know, we're certainly barred by some Supreme Court decisions from mandating that. But, you know, it's a, it's a carrot and pick scenario where I think there may be some additional carrots that can be offered. I've talked to a few folks and been thinking about some potential state carrots that could be offered in terms of some, some potential legislation around property tax waivers for folks. And I'm wondering, and I've asked the City Manager to explore, looking at some, some potential relief for income tax for folks who choose, make the choice to live in the city. Again, we can't force anybody to do it, but, you know, there's only so many carrots we have. But like, looking at what other flexibility we may have around incentivizing folks to, to call Grand Rapids home, who also, you know, call Grand Rapids a place they'd like to work.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner. And we, we have been talking about ways to be more creative with our recruitment. The income tax, property tax, income tax incentive is one that, of course, is, is, is a sensitive conversation in, in the middle of the recession, but everything costs. So we're looking at that as well as maybe alternatively looking at more of a, more, not a longer-term commitment from the property tax, income tax side, more of a signing bonus or other, other incentives. But you, you are, point well made about trying to incentivize people to come and live in the city. The other comment on the, the culture of the department, you know, I think I've been, I've been asked this a few times. Where, where is the leadership of the department, both from command all the way down to the rank and file, as well as labor leaders? And I think you, Commissioner Lanier mentioned this as well before. How, how have they been engaged? And I'll let the chief speak to that. I know that my intent is to, to make sure that we try to have as much engagement, as much engagement as possible. We've, matter of fact, I think I have a meeting scheduled this afternoon with some of the, the chief and I, with some of the labor presidents to begin, to continue this dialogue. So Chief, any, any thoughts on where, where, what conversations have you had internally with your senior command staff, with, in the rank and file around this moment that we're in, in our city and in our country? And these, the request for reform and how have they responded?
Yeah, I, I think they're at a point where they just want to know what are we doing? And again, we're still in the middle of this to a certain extent. But to your point, absolutely. I did address the lineups. I know the senior command has gone and addressed their officers. So we're trying to communicate with them where we're at right now and what we're looking to do. And Commissioner O'Connor makes a great point, their buy-in. They have to understand that there's a lot of support out there, even though it may not seem like it. But we have to rethink how we're doing police work in 2020. It's something that probably should have been done prior to this. But there's a big awakening out there that we have to do better. So they're, we're, we're trying to keep them engaged. As Commissioner Lanier mentioned, the strategic plan, we'll probably have to revisit it. But a lot of that work was done, but it was done from all ranks of the police department. It wasn't just a bunch of commanders getting together, looking at where the department needs to go or things we need to do. It was set up throughout officers, sergeants, lieutenants, captains, and the deputy chiefs. So we'll probably, we, we will have to revisit it. Much has changed since we were last looking at it, but they need to be involved in this process also.
Thanks, Chief. And then I'll, I'll turn to Commissioner Estasi for final questions and comments. And then if we're good, we can move along to the youth employment initiative. Commissioner?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll echo the thanks for everyone as well. And I didn't want to start, but I am gonna, with, with this comment, but something that Commissioner O'Connor said about, you know, what are the carrots that we can provide? And I think that's where a lot of this feedback and outcry and what are we doing? Because I remember as a, as a citizen volunteer, probably seven years ago, sitting in a room, maybe it was 601, and talking about what would it take to have some sort of incentive type of plan to have officers, you know, knowing what, what we are limited to by law, but what could we, what we could do in response to that? So I, I use that, that comment as sort of a, you know, a moment in time. And, and I think why this is the urgent work that is in front of us. And so I have some, some, probably what I would consider more tactical pieces that I want to discuss, and then some overall, overall thoughts. But I think to Commissioner Lanier's point about workforce development, which we'll talk in a moment. But we, in our last year's budget, the Third Word Equity Fund did have dollars associated with the seeking safety program with the family outreach center. And this is some of the stuff that Mr. Davis talked about in terms of support for, for those who might be experiencing trauma, trauma due to violence, trauma due to everything that is sort of happening in our country right now. And so I think, again, reaffirming, working with the partners who have been there with us, who, and, and I don't know Commissioner Lanier, I think that grant may be ending soon. So I think that's another thing to put on our radar, and I wanted to make sure that we connected those dots. I appreciate the comments about the police chief committee. I have brought this up, I think, from when I was on public safety. And then in my first, Commissioner Repart and Commissioner Moody could attest to this. They're probably getting tired of me talking about it. But we have a public safety board. What is the charge of that public safety board? How do these boards tie into the other existing boards or new that we want to create? Again, I think that is part of community engagement as well. If we're asking people to come and give their time, what is their charge? What does it look different? And so I would urge, you know, my thoughts are, Chief, as, as you look to potentially add more people, how does that tie into public safety? And presumably, maybe that discussion will be happening this afternoon. I appreciate the update about the officer. You mentioned some, some of the pieces in terms of, you know, those who were, those who were engaged with some of the property destruction on, on May 30th, but also at least one report of an officer or community feeling that there was an excessive use of force or unprovoked source. And so I think that update is important. And I will say that is one of my top priorities, to keep that at the forefront of this conversation. We, we, this is a both and. We have to, I think, respond, but we also need to look forward. But that is very important to me, and I will, will want to continue to hear updates there. I, I personally think that, you know, we talked a little bit about some of the Commissioner Lanier process and, and policy and some of the tactical pieces. I think if we are going to truly be, you know, eradicate violence in our community, it, it comes in all forms. And utilizing different tactics in our police department is something that I would, would love to see eliminated from our police department. I think overall, we're talking about the youth employment, but we also have to talk about our interactions with youth. And so overpolicing or policing in a way that is not equitable, or if we, you know, to the point of reimagining policing, we can totally undercut all of our workforce development efforts if we do not focus on our youth interactions as it relates to policing. I think one of the things, as people have been reaching out to me and going through emails, which I know all of you are doing as well, who probably had some dings during this meeting, is, you know, Brandon, you talked about a report kind of looking at all these past recommendations. I would like to see, as I'm trying to piece together every single meeting that we're having since, you know, May 30th and up to this point, we're talking about meetings in August. You know, this event, I think, is going to be, you know, these events will be written about in the next 20 years and the next 30 years in our city. I think it's important that we document this. And, you know, I know we have some PowerPoints, but I, I would appreciate something that is almost like a running sort of situational update. And I know we have, have some of that certainly for COVID. But that would help me to understand, when did we do what? And I think Commissioner Lanier, you talked a little bit about that of like, when this policy was enacted and, and those sorts of things. So I would look for something like that. I think that's also part of the transparency process and communication. I think communication is not just responding to what people are asking us, but to be proactive and, and the information that we're presenting to our community. I think it's, I don't know what item I'm on, but this is too important. I agree, we, we have to talk about these things. But it's important to know to our community who might be watching today on this committee of the whole meeting, that the state of emergency did end this morning. So we didn't talk about that, but I think that's important to know to anybody who's watching. And at this point, we're not being asked to extend that. So that was another piece. I too had the question about lawsuits, Commissioner Lanier. And then I think the question about some of the practices about what we're doing with the Office of OPA as it relates to budget. Right now, we are talking about these, you know, the practices of funding with this current commission. Some of you will, will be turned out in a short amount of time. And, and all of us are subject to term limits at this point. And different people may rotate in, in different offices. And so what are we doing to, to capture that? You know, Commissioner, Commissioner Jones talked about the 1995 ballot initiative and, you know, sort of the long-lasting impacts of that. But some of these things that we are deciding in community about, hey, these dollars out of our general operating fund are going to go to OPA, how do we know that that is going to be the same thing? You know, sort of that administrative practice into the next budget, into the next budget? Just because I believe when we make policy, we have to think about it, not just for who's sitting at the table today, but who is going to sit at the table in the future. I think the last thing that I want to say is, is really around why I think we're experiencing this high volume of emails, high volume of community engagement. People, you know, who write and say, I've, I've never, I've never written, I don't even know how to attend a city commission meeting, is because of these statistics. And this is Kent County, this is not Grand Rapids. But one in six black children enter our homeless system compared to one in 130 white children. Here in Kent County, black families earn 47 cents for every dollar white families earn. And so I think these, the questions about where are we spending our money are not coming out of this one event, are not coming out of the murder of George Floyd. They are coming on through the keels of a recognition of the racial disparities that exist in our community. And those are Kent County numbers. And so if we drilled it down, I, I believe it might, might look worse in Grand Rapids. So I don't think that the things that we're discussing, I know some people have said this feels like a knee-jerk reaction. Are we responding to people? In fact, I think this is what we have been setting our community up for in a positive way. So four or five years ago, Mayor, I can't remember, but engaging with the governmental alliance on racial equity, doing a strategic, a strategic plan that undergirds in equity, where we talk about utilizing every single, everything we do will be embedded with equity. Now we are being asked to, how do we actually operationalize equity? So I think it is much easier on our equity journey to talk about the disparities, to talk about the frustrations. It is another thing now for us to, to operationalize that. And I will, I'm sorry, I kept hearing a little feedback. I'm going to be like City Manager, could somebody mute their phone? Thank you. So we are at the point now where I don't believe this is a knee-jerk reaction. I believe that this is our next step to how do we operationalize equity in Grand Rapids. And as Commissioner Repart said, this is uncomfortable. It is awkward. It is frustrating. It is tiring, but it is necessary. It is absolutely necessary when we look at those statistical numbers and more. So I think there's more. I also would say we, I, I invite and hope that our county officials will also be part of this process. Because when we look at, Commissioner Lanier talked about, you know, calling a, a public health emergency as it relates to violence and the gun violence. This was something that the, the Safe Task Force, when I was on as a, as a neighbor, was talking about. I don't know, Commissioner Lanier, 2014, 2013? Thank you. So, so for me, I have been thinking deeply about, about all this work. And, you know, we all voted on the budget unanimously on May 21st. We are in a very different position on May 21st. And for me, you know, I also think back to the things that I said when I was sworn in, that I believe our values, we have to align our values with the resources and where we place them. And so I put that on myself as well as a first-year commissioner and asking myself, what are those difficult questions? And I think COVID represented a response in one way. And, you know, things that we wanted to do, things that we felt were missing, wanted to enhance, not being able to do that. Now we are in this other response and, you know, black Americans being killed at higher rates, black men being killed at higher rates due to policing. That's just, for me, that's point blank. There's not really much, there's not much sort of mincing of those words there. And so for me, I am supportive of the wisdom that those in 1995 said, we don't know what our community is going to look like, what are we going to need around public safety? There is not evidence that having more police officers indeed makes us more safe. And I firmly believe that. And so because of that, I am supportive of doing the work. I realize it will not happen tomorrow, it is not happening at this meeting today, to, to say where would we shift those dollars in our general operating fund budget to get to that minimum of the 32%? And, you know, I, I want to affirm and support that as well in this meeting. So thank you.
Yep, thank you, Commissioner. All really excellent points. And so I know City Manager wants to respond. I know you brought up a question around public safety committee, and that's been a conversation that City Manager has had with the chief and Mr. Davis. And then I see Ms. Stacy Stoudamire, maybe she can speak a little bit to the, how do we operationalize equity?
Yeah, so, thank you, Mayor. And so I, I, a couple of things that have been done in the back room. Everything that we put, some of those recommendations, we did have our, our performance management officer align that with our strategic plan. We were going to present it that way. But for the sake of not being focused too much on process and being focused on action is what this, what we felt the urgency of the moment called for, to be plain spoken in what we were doing. We didn't put this in our traditional narrative around strategic plan. And so we are happy to go back and layer that lens, but do know that all of our values have been considered. And each of these actions have been aligned with things that's consistent with each section of our strategic plan, whether it is with safety or with economic opportunity, economic prosperity and, and opportunity. And so that, that, that intentionality has been there. This is just the way that we chose to lay it out today because we have been moving rather fast over this small time. And, and some of the things that we're talking about in terms of the system, like how the, the minimum funding level for the police department has, has happened, that, that does require a lot of fiscal forecasting. And that requires the vote of the, the people and charter amendments. And, and this, this is, this is a lot. So what we've tried to focus on right now was what could we get done within the next 60 days to address some of these issues? And it doesn't change our long-term lens of our three-to-five-year strategy. That, that remains in place. And so many of the issues, the police department strategic plan, that, that's still part of it. They were, they were trying to align their departmental plan with, with the city's strategic plan or the cascading of our equity lands in the training and department. Those were already in place. How do we get departments, departments continue to have those embedded? We were just trying to be very, very responsive to the urgency of the moment. Because the letters that you are getting, you are no different than other elected officials in other communities. I have been in contact with both appointed as well as elected staff from other communities, and that's happening. There, there are some elected officials in other cities who are getting 20,000, 30,000 emails. I mean, this is, this is what is happening across the country. And, and it is, it is not, and it, and it's very intentional that people are asking voices to be heard and spoken of. And they're asking, what I'm hearing, they're not asking for strategic plans. They're, they're asking for, for things that can be done immediately. strategic plans. They're they're asking for for things that can be done immediately to stop the next episode. Now, strategy is certainly a part of it. And we we will, we will continue to have that. We've had, we've had that. That's, that's the reason why we can talk somewhat in a better position than other cities about what what we have done. But we still recognize that there is need to do more, and we just want to be as responsive as we can to the moment. So please don't interpret uh members of the public, any of this is knee jerk. Knee jerk would have been the next day saying what we're going to do. And I I was asked that, to on the spot, make commitments and continue to be asked, what will I do right now? And and that is not what we're, that is not how we create good policy here. Now, having said that, I don't want to take years to 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 uh be responsive. And so what you see from last week and today, I think, is is the best thinking we, we're at this more, this moment, and it's certainly not uh comprehensive and all inclusive. We know we have a lot more work to do, and we are willing to do that work internally and with community. And uh I I'm going to ask now Ms. Stout to help to respond to some of the other um questions or comments around that continued embedding of equity within our, within our organization.
Thank you, City Manager.
Pardon me. Just, Ms. Stout, may I just interject? I think I just want to clarify something, City Manager. I I think, to me, it's not, I, I did not mean that there's a knee jerk, knee jerk reaction by the city. What I'm saying is for myself as the leader, as listening to individuals, is that I think there are people who feel like we are, like we're just responding to things. And I, what I'm saying is, I don't believe we are responding to things. What I believe is that this has been part of our framework as our strategic plan, which our work with GARE. So I, I, some of your response, I I feel like I needed to clarify that before we went on to this next step.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. And I didn't take your response as saying that. I I took your responses doing that and watching some of what the sentiment from the public was. And I too affirm your response, and that was my elaboration, elaborating on that as well. So I think we're aligned.
Thank you.
Again, thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Commissioner Esasi, for the comment around operationalizing equity in Grand Rapids as far as the organization. Um it's multi-layered, correct? You talked about making change that will live on beyond those currently in positions. And so policy for long-term sustainability is critically important. And it's policy across the board. And so having this equality approach makes the assumption that everyone is situated the same way. And so we must use, similar to what Commissioner Lanier and what you mentioned, GARE, which is Government Alliance on Race and Equity, to say, who benefits, directly benefits, who burdens, who gets the burden, who closest to the pain, closest to the disparity, gets closest to the power to make decisions, and how do we work together to do that? Um what are the unintended consequences, right? And so there's a lot of consequences that sometimes happens from good intent. And so moving beyond intent to really the impact and measuring that and being very transparent with that data in a way that's accessible and easy to understand, right? It's not a 200-page report, but something more visual. So again, policy for long-term change, echoing what City Manager had shared around action, um being very clear on what action's taking place. I think part of that is training, a part of that, right? People need to know better, to do better, um and they want to do better from what I'm feeling and hearing from my colleagues. But then also putting that new knowledge into action that has the community level impacts that we want. And so again, policy, action, training, accountability. So how do we weave this into the DNA of what we do? So it's not just the strategic plan or dashboards. It's it's our hiring, which HR is working with higher reach, where it's it's also impact of the follow-up, right? And so we have these plans, we have all these different plans, but what's really happening and sharing that community and holding folks accountable. So more intermittent, uh intermediate reporting out. I think also, you know, we talk about circles of concern, circle of control, circle of influence, to really lean into that circle of influence right now. We have a lot of influence at the city. We might not have direct legal control, but we do have leverage. We do have influence. And so how do we partner different? And to hold also to partner with the city, how are partners upholding justice in their organizations and standing for justice and equity around around this work? So and that includes partners like contractors and investing in micro local businesses. And so it's it's where we spend our time, our influence, where we spend our money. Um so those are just some of the strategies to do this. We have we have a road ahead of us, but we didn't get here overnight. Like you said, Commissioner Esasi, this has been years of buildup, both internally and in the community. And it's it's just such a great opportunity to make the change that we've been talking about and continue to make change because we have made progress. I don't want to minimize that as well. So that's just high level, my response to your question. Um but similar to the conversations around strategic, the broader strategic plan, we have goals within the office, but putting that in a way that's more accessible for all, and it's informed by the community as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Stout. I know I I speak for everyone around this table, but I deeply appreciate your work here in the city and in the community and all the work you've done, even with me, on this journey since we started with the Government Alliance on Race and Equity. Thank you for that work. Uh and then I'll turn to Mr. Davis to finish up any final comments, and then I think we'll move along to the Youth Employment Initiative.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. First of all, thank you for the thorough discussion and engagement today. We appreciate it. Um I I want to affirm my office's commitment to making sure that we we see through all of these things that we've committed to and also to to engage, continuing to engage with community intentionally about these issues. We recognize that a police reform is a heavy topic. It's not something that's easy for leaders to navigate, nor is it easy for community members to navigate. But it's important, and we're at a pivotal place in our nation right now, where this discussion is on the forefront everywhere. And it should be, because it's not something that we can just gloss past anymore. As we talk about one of the specific questions that was raised around Public Safety Commission and some of the other boards and groups that we're involved with, my office is working to compare all these different groups. So we're looking at all the groups we have across the city that kind of work in this area. So we have Public Safety. We now have the Chief's Advisory Committee. We have our Safe Task Force, and we even have CRC and and CAB, all of these groups that are looking at similar types of things. So one of the things my office is doing is aligning that work, seeing where there are similarities, seeing where we need to enhance some of the abilities in in different groups, and to make sure that we have a clear understanding, not only as as the city internal, but also all of our community understands what these boards and commissions do so that we can serve in the best way possible. But thank you for your commitment to the city and for your commitment to this work. And with that, I will turn it back to the mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Uh all right. With that, I will turn to our City Manager and let him fill us in on the work related to the Youth Employment Initiative.
Mayor, uh it's like all I care is worth. So we'll go ahead with the next section, and I'm going to ask, thank you bringing up the presentation, and I'll ask Mr. DeLong and Ms. Heemstra, who's been working very hard with many community partners and organizations to help us um bring forth this, I think, very needed and very well intended program. So with that, Mr. DeLong, I'll turn it over to you. I think it's up now. Then we have it in presentation mode.
We're all set. Uh thank you, City Manager. And this discussion's been really good leading up to this point, because it it shows the interplay between social justice and economic justice. And that's why we're so excited about the Grow 1000 Youth Employment Program. The community response has been exceptional. When I talk about community, I mean, community members, school officials across the community, and also employers throughout the community. So all of them have been engaged and have been, have been very supportive. And we continue to work with both school leadership and with community organizations in terms of recruiting youth for this real opportunity. So in the program, there are four types of partnerships. One is to host and pay. Allison, thank you. So to host and pay the youth wage, so to do both, be a employer or a a host organization, and also to pay the wage. Another is to sponsor youth. And so that would be a company, and it's been talked about earlier today, about those who are companies that are head people in Curlo or are in a position where bringing employees into the organization isn't something they can do right now. What they can do is support employment in other organizations throughout the community, which could be not-for-profits, could be other organizations that that will be able to host youth and provide or host youth and provide a meaningful experience. Uh another partner are not-for-profit organizations that have experience in employment and can help provide sports and other activities that will help ensure that this is a successful opportunity. And that there's also not-for-profit organizations that could serve as employers. So what we're, the program outlined is that we're providing access to various employers. We have over 500 positions now that are either identified as being post-positioned or are being supported. And our youth would be working 120-hour work experience over six weeks, so roughly 20 hours per week. They would earn $10 per hour. They would get virtual training before they are placed, and the training is complete and gives them ideas about work keys and success in the work environment. And we'll be starting that training the week of June 29. Our priority is for Grand Rapids youth, and further priority from the 49503, 49507, 49508, 49509 zip codes, where we've had, where we know that there are the greatest disparities, and also that we've had the highest impact of COVID cases. So the deadline for youth applications is June 29, and placements are expected to begin on July 13. I'd like now to turn it over to Lynn Heemstra to talk about how, a little bit more detail about the program, and we'll take questions.
Thank you, Mr. DeLong. First of all, I want to thank you and thank the City Manager for really lifting up our city's youth during this time. It's very exciting to to see this happen. I'm inspired by the support of everyone who has really risen to the challenge. And I'm talking about city departments, community organizations, the business community. Everyone's really come together in a very short amount of time to ensure that we can put together a program that we would want any one of our own children to attend. So we're really looking at a quality program that's going to expose young people to career opportunities, to the industries that that they're working in, and to really get some of the skills that will prepare them for their future. Uh so as you know, we've had a successful Leadership Employment Achievement and Direction Program over the past 10 years. This takes it to another level, and we were ramping up to ensure that we've got what it takes to to process the applications that are coming through from young people to be employed, as well as the businesses who are offering placements. So we have, in fact, several who have already stepped up to the plate to say, yes, we will like to place young people in our organization. And we also have several that have already submitted dollars to ensure that young people can have a placement. And our work in the next couple of weeks is really to sort through how best we can place young people in in positions where they have interest and where they're prepared as best they can be to do a good job. So we have application links for both businesses and how they can contribute, both with placements as well as donations. And we also have an application for the young people. grandrapidsmi.gov slash GROW, Grow 1000, business for the business applications, and Grow 1000 for the applications. Next slide. So I I've mentioned how inspired I've been with the partnerships that we have in place. We are looking at recruitment and placement, support, monitoring. So we know that our young people are going to have to be supported while they're in their placement. We also know that businesses need support in terms of how to work best with young people. And so we're going to do our best to make sure there's a contact with every child that's been placed, a visit, a field visit, and to ensure that things are going smoothly. We will provide support for those businesses and that young person should, any issues arise. We're looking at transportation options in the way of certainly bus passes, as well as nonprofits that can help support us and businesses that can support us if that we're finding that that's going to be a big issue. We have had conversations with school districts as well as higher education. They're very excited about this. They're going to do their best to get the word out. And they're certainly going to assist in terms of work permits that have to be processed fairly quickly. We have, as I've mentioned before, several employers, foundations who've already stepped up to the plate, Spectrum Health, Myers, and many others who've said, yes, we want to do this. And of course, the city of Grand Rapids, the city departments have done a marvelous job of stepping up and saying, we'll take young people and we'll give them a worthwhile experience. I want you all to know that we are saying to everyone, do this virtually or in person, but there must be COVID precautions taken and to ensure that children and youth, young people, are safe at all times in the work that they're doing. We really feel that that's important. So there's opportunity for both and as part of this experience. Again, it's been an honor to be part of the team. There have been multiple departments involved in this. We quickly come together. HR is going to be on the ready to process all of these. 311 has done a marvelous job in getting the applications up and running. And again, we're all working together to make sure this is going to be successful. Thank you. Any questions?
Yes, now we'd like to take any questions you might have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. DeLong and Ms. Heemstra. So I'm going to, I'm going to add my, I've been on a number of calls with businesses over the last week, as well as in conversations with nonprofit organizations that serve young people in our city, and all the work that's gone into this effort to move it as easily as possible, along with the internal team and the City Manager for his leadership. So with that, I'll open it up to my colleagues for questions. Commissioner Lanier?
Thank you. Thanks, Lynn and Eric, for the presentation. I I shared some of my questions early on, and um and I think some of them have been answered, but I do have a few more. And I may have missed this because I had to open my windows. It was getting warm. So you may have said this already, Lynn, but did you indicate the number or the age range for those that are being recruited?
Yeah, I I did not. It's 15 to 21, and young people have to live in the city of Grand Rapids. And we are certainly focused on certain areas in in Grand Rapids where there have been disparities on on multiple outcomes. And so we're really looking at 49503, 07, 08, and 09.
Okay, thank you. So that answered the residency question that I had, too. I know that there are a number of partner organizations who they hire up to 24-year-olds. So I don't know if there's room to include, if we're trying to get to 1,000, if there's room to include an older audience, or if if 21 is it for other reasons that wouldn't lend flexibility?
I'll answer that. So in conversations with community organizations, 20, 15 to 21-year-old wage group seems to work well with the wage we're offering and the experience that we're offering. If you're 21 or older, you might be supporting a family in, you know, or your own family, and you might need to make more money. And persons who are age 21 or older, generally, we've heard from both employers and community members, are going to be able to have a different experience and make more than members, are going to be able to have a different experience and make more than the wage we're offering. So the 10 to 21 seems to fit, sorry, the 15 to 21 seems to fit well with what we're trying to do in terms of work experience and opportunity to explore future opportunities. And I think also could lead to persons being recruited by companies for long-term employment. So, but it's been kind of the wisdom of the community and the employers to stay within the 15 to 21 age group.
Okay. So I think that all of the employers that I named earlier, which was probably about eight of them, all of their programs end at 24. I'm not sure what community was engaged in that decision, but I'm curious to know why they may have 24-year-olds in their existing programs, and this wouldn't work for us. And maybe it's the dollar amount, and I know many of those programs are tied to stipend. So we're really here to debate that back and forth, but just, I think it's odd that they do higher ages.
And Commissioner, may I, and what I've asked Ms. Heemstra to find a way, what we've done last year with our LEED program goes age 24, and those were 40 students, and I think we can still find a way to do that and this. It's not one or the other. And so there's some flexibility we could still have with the LEED program, but this is something different that we specifically wanted to target, younger, a younger age group, and that was the intent. But I think we can certainly still find a way to continue the LEED program because it has a different focus in terms of college readiness.
Okay, great, thanks. And then I know, Mr. DeLong, you talked a little bit about the city acquiring 50 of the interns. And just want to mention something that I, a conversation that I have with the city manager to you and to Ms. Heemstra. It would be great if we could spread the recruits that we, or the interns that we recruit throughout the city in areas where we may have other partnerships, like neighborhood associations who wouldn't otherwise have the resources to buy into this program like companies, the SIDS and BID, as well as some nonprofits who also wouldn't have the means of paying to participate but may have the need to make sure that they have some hands-on support. It would be great, as we frequently talk about parks maintenance and things of that nature, it would be great on the other side of this to not have any needs that have gone unmet when we're talking about bringing on so many additional hands. I am a little curious about whether the city will have the capacity to fully bring on this many employees, temporary or otherwise, in this short period of time, and make sure that they are all equipped and prepared to go out. And so I'm still advocating for us partnering with these organizations that do this work already and may already have cohorts that exist that could be rotated in with obviously the city coming on board to make sure that they are trained at the level that they need to be trained with, whatever it is that we would provide, before releasing them to employers. I just, and maybe not every experience is an experience that feels like work experience. Maybe some of the experiences could be programs like a seeking safety where it's tied to addressing trauma and the issue of violence that people are experiencing. I know that quite, to be quite frank, I think many of us are seeing violence unfold before our eyes regularly with our national 24-hour news. And it is traumatizing. I am doing my best to stay away from it and still be impacted by it because it's everywhere. And so that's just one form of trauma, but we know that it's happening in other ways. And so if we can't put everybody to work, how do we also make sure that they're getting some other supports? Some of these programs have job training, GED processes, and certifications and things of that nature. So it may not be physically working someplace. It may be some other methods that could also yield a successful opportunity, I think, for people in this age group. Thank you.
Thank you. So in terms of, the first question you asked about spreading youth around to other organizations, thank you for that suggestion. City manager and you, I think we've had a conversation about that. He related to me, and that's a really capital idea. And we're, as we, because remember, there's two types of things happening. There are employers who are employing directly and employers who are supporting, who can be employed. And that, it's that second group that we can place, as you suggested, and that's a good idea. The second item having to do with how we're recruiting. So we have had conversations with, that included the Urban League, the United Self-Organized These, also all, you know, so Steeple Town, the Center for Community Transformation, Realism is Loyalty, all that cohort of groups that has been laboring in this area for a long time. We've had two conversations with them, and we've asked them to help us recruit. They've been interested in that, and they've asked us to consider how we might support the youth that are employed. And so it's a good two-way conversation, and we'll find a way to, I think, do both of those things.
And also, Commissioner, I did share with the staff our conversation about even potentially using safe funding to help with this connection, particularly with community, as we create these supports and site monitors and different programming. And so that's on the table as well. And the staff is very, have been very agile and flexible, and so have the community partners working with us to make this very important effort. And we know it's a challenging task, but that's exactly, just as we're challenging, we're challenged to reimagine law enforcement, we're even challenged to reimagine programming the other areas and summer employment, youth engagement. Particularly, we know every year we have increased in crime and youth interaction. So we wanted to do something that was different than last year and more positive. And so any feedback that you can have as we develop it, we appreciate it. But I've heard tremendous amount of support for the notion from community members as well as our staff. I'm looking forward to having a couple of members in the city, working in the city manager's office. I know I've talked to the city attorney about the experience. We're excited to have people learn about the development process and economic development. And even in our facilities office, one of the things that I shared even, my first exposure to city government was in the 10th grade, when I was a summer youth intern at the health department, working in the fall. A little did I know that I would be where I am right now, but I'm so appreciative of those pathways. And so we've talked to employers about creating those opportunities, and they themselves can give them something that we can't. So whether it is spending a day with professional administrators or doctors or physicians or pharmacists in the healthcare industry, or with engineers in other industries, I think the employers that we've talked to have really bought into this. And so I think this is a beginning, and we certainly know that we can improve upon it. But we have talked about trying to make sure that we embed them in nonprofit organizations and community organizations as service who cannot afford it, and those plans are under works. And so we'll give an update on that as well.
Thank you. And then I think if you all have any promotional materials that's shareable, especially if it's social media-ready, please share that. I think, you know, I can't speak on behalf of everyone, but I know I will personally make sure that I share it with my networks. I am also curious about 49506 being missing from the targeted zip codes, and perhaps it has been gentrified enough that it is no longer a priority zip code, but I was curious of why that one was missing.
Well, we looked at, we looked at economic disparities, and we also looked at the number of COVID cases. And the, this 49506 did not rank as highly in terms of COVID cases as the other zip codes we have used.
Yeah, we can take a look at it on the other end, but you're about to see the zip code ranking in the next section of the code. And that is a data that we got from Kent County, so we'll have to follow up with them and check on the 49506.
Yeah. Thank you. All good questions. And I do believe that we'll have information out by the end of today that we can all utilize to help promote. And I know that the city website is already up and running. I looked at it this morning, so we'll make sure that everyone gets that. Commissioner Part, so your hand up, and then Commissioner Assisi. Is that a, there you go.
Yeah, I'm good, although I think it probably should be 49504 and 49506, 49508 and 9 are Wyoming and Kentwood.
There are some Grand Rapids 49508s.
There is. Yes. Yep. And I know it gets a little tricky with zip codes versus census tracts, but yeah, thank you for pointing that out. Commissioner Assisi?
Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the work to put this in order. I'll echo the comments about promoting, you know, this is sort of my day job, the workforce development world, so this is very near and dear to me, and I think it ties. So, I mean, obviously, we're talking about as police reform, but I think we cannot, we have to continue to elevate that, and that is part of this work as well. You know, I think I'll echo about our community partners. I believe Steeple Town and Commissioner Repart may know more, but they were facing losing their longtime buildings over this last year, and I think they may have secured some space. So, you know, to me, I think it's really important to continue to work with those organizations. So I'm glad to hear that because many of them have been doing this work over a long time. I was talking to a friend last night, was kind of talking about, you know, the meeting today, and, you know, her first job, so many people's first jobs were at the Hispanic Center or at other places like this, and they've bought on, you know, this person is a business owner now in our community. And so to your sentiments, city manager, I think that's what we need to think about is not just the summer, but think about potentially, I would even challenge us to think about year-long, because I don't have children, but I know that GRPS, I think, is going to move to somewhat of a modified schedule in the fall. So this might represent some good opportunities for the school system and business, so I wanted to point that out. I too have questions about the age range. You know, typically in the workforce development world, we think about opportunity use some the way up to 26, but typically up to 24, so I would echo that as well. Commissioner Lanier? I want to make sure we can tie this work, Mayor, with the things that you and others are doing around our promise zone. I think that would be a missed opportunity if we did not talk to individuals as they're on work sites about what is also being offered, you know, in our city. So I think if that can be part of an orientation process, I just think that is really good work to connect. And then, you know, making sure we are working closely with our workforce development partners like West Michigan Works. We work with them very closely in my day job. Those who might not be able to financially provide it, there could be, we owe a dollar able to help with some of those wages. And I know that, you know, every summer they work on that, because in most of the businesses I work on, they're, you know, they're doing these programs probably starting in January. And obviously, I know we're working to respond in a really meaningful way. So I just, I think it's important to go and work with those experts. And then lastly, I do think that, a little bit about Commissioner Lanier, you talked about the A3 process sort of on the front end, about the stuff that we were talking about just with police reform. But I think that when we do things like this, we should also, I need to understand, are we going to have a formal evaluation? So when we're asking businesses to provide funding, when we're getting funding and, you know, and spending that on behalf of, you know, businesses that provided to us for us to do this work, an evaluation is not only the transparency and the checks and balances, but it also could provide great opportunity to show the impact and then be able to leverage future dollars. And I think all of us have written grants in various forms, and so we understand the importance of that. So there are, there are some things that can be done for free. I think I just saw something recently, and I'd be happy to talk offline about that, Lynn, but just making sure there's a strong evaluation component, I think, is necessary to continue success.
Thank you. Oh, I'll just, I'll just, so Assisi, thank you for those comments, all really good points. I wanted to let you know that I have been in conversations with Dr. Pink and members of the Promise Zone Authority, and we are looking at having this be closely connected to our work as we identify students who are eligible and are going to participate in the Promise Scholarship. And then also to let you know, Dr. Pink has been helping to coordinate this effort, and then Superintendent Weather O'Neill has been involved in all of the meetings that we've had so far. And with her being the chair of the Promise Zone Authority, there's some really close interconnection between that work. So I just wanted to make sure all of you knew that. We did have a meeting last week with the Promise Zone Authority, and there's a lot of commitment to this effort. Mr. DeLong, you want to add anything, and then I'll turn to Commissioner Jones?
I was just going to comment on the evaluation process. That the team has included an evaluation component in the overall experience, so we'll learn about what we've learned and be able to pivot and do better in the future.
And again, we have tried to align early on with West Michigan Works and, excuse me, Mr. Moss. And the focus is just a little bit different from what our conversations has been with him in terms of focusing on people who were, their summer programs, our job programs, rather focusing, targeting people who have dropped out. And certainly, that's still an important group that we want to reach. But he has, he's been part of discussions, and we're trying to make sure we continue to align that.
Thank you, city manager. And then Commissioner Jones, I know you've been on a lot of these calls with us as well and has been a part of this, building this effort. So, and then if I don't see any other questions, then after Commissioner Jones' comments, we'll move on to the COVID update, and then we'll get to our action items.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, you're correct. With my role as head of the Urban League, I've had the opportunity to be a part of the original conversations and have been pleased with how it has progressed to this point. I will also, I would also like to say that this could very well be the start of something much more aggressive in terms of engaging our young people in the workforce. I know that a number of folks, probably the vast majority of people who were part of this committee, this, which started very small and now has morphed into a number of folks, this is part of their response to a desire to lean in more around the disparities that exist within our city, in particular within the African-American community. And this, I think, in many ways is their first bite of the apple, because I think it represents a low-hanging fruit. And city manager Washington was very upfront in terms of what his immediate need was, and they responded accordingly. And these are, again, the vast majority are CEOs of local corporations and other influencers in our town, and they have made it perfectly clear that they are ready to lean in, to listen, to engage in a way that I've never seen before in my life here. And it's just been very, very encouraging because they're also very much aware of what's before us as a city. You know, there was, depending on who you were, your lived experience, perhaps your zip code, your socioeconomic status, and your ethnicity, the events of the 30th of May, you know, you may have responded, again, differently based on where you are in life. And I think for a lot of them, what they saw was just a very in-your-face reminder or acknowledgement that inequity is a real issue, that racism, systemic racism, is an even greater issue. And so they are, again, I think this is very much just the tip of the iceberg, and I'm excited about moving forward in the power of possibility with this group in particular because of, A, their willingness, but B, their influence, and how they can help in moving the needle for our city so that we can have a more equitable and a more just and a city that has more opportunities for more people. So, yeah, no, good job against city manager Washington and Mr. DeLong and Ms. Heemstra for your work thus far.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. I like that. We should all be saying the power of possibility and opportunity. Okay, so with that, I'm going to be moving on. As we, with all of these other really important issues, we also need to continue to be really careful and work on issues related to opening up safely and making sure people continue to be safe as we are still living through a pandemic, and we still have individuals in our city who are contracting COVID-19. And so with that, we'll turn it to the city manager to give a brief update on where we are with the COVID-19 status and making sure that we're on where we are with the COVID-19 status and making sure that we're doing everything we can to open us safely in our city.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to ask Ms. Farrell, our emergency coordinator, to come and provide the update.
Thank you, City Manager. I think I might be having camera issues, so if you can't see me, my camera's on. But just for a COVID update, this is the current dashboard from the Kent County Health Department. We currently have a total of 4,087 cases in the county and the city of Grand Rapids. Out of that 4,087, 1,197 are considered active, and we've had 2,777 cases recovered. And we are currently at 113 deaths when it comes to the death count for the county and the city. Again, as I've mentioned before, our, this dashboard is great. It gives you great information of the breakdown of the zip codes and the impacts on our zip codes, like we've just talked about here throughout the day. Also, one thing I think is very important to mention is that there's a lot of discussion of increasing opportunities to get tested. And I want to reiterate here that the Kent County Health Department currently has four different locations that they are hosting for testing, two walk-up sites and two drive-through sites. So, this information is on the Kent County's Health Department's webpage with that dashboard, and these testing sites are available to any individual over the age of six months who live in a community impacted by COVID-19, have known exposure to a person with confirmed COVID-19 or symptoms of COVID, or work in a job that puts them at high risk for exposure. And then outside just these four locations, CVS is also offering testing, and same thing with our healthcare facility. So, there's still a lot of opportunities for testing opportunities outside of these four locations. With the lift of the stay-at-home, stay-safe order on June 1st, we've been working hard as a city as far as our reentry goes, bringing back staff and opening up our facilities to the public. So, on June 8th, we started our Phase 1 launch with limited in-person city services. And with that, we had about 64% of our city staff return to assigned facilities. We are still obviously very much using safety measures in place. That's the use of PPE, doing employee training. We've held a few town halls and updating and training our, our employees in regards to how to stay safe, and then also reinforcing the safety within our customer interactions. Also, we are working on what our Phase 2 looks like in our reentry plans, and those are in development and finalization. We're looking to launch those in July in regards to how that would look in our city facilities. Outside of, so with our recovery update, there's obviously been a lot of work with our recovery groups happening within the city. One group here that's mentioned is our outdoor space activation working group. The administrative startup with this has been completed. There's been a lot of positive response in regards to this from our public communications. And then really, on those social zone discussions, there was a pre-application meeting on June 9th, and we were receiving applications for this up through June 11th. And that's for seven social zones and looking at potentially one more to add to that. They are currently reviewing those applications and also assessing the complexities with mobility and access in those social zones and making sure we're adhering to that, what that looks like. Also, looking at 20 temporary use private applications and reviewing those as well. And again, some complexities with that includes physical distancing on those locations. For economic recovery, with some funding goes, this is just a snapshot of a group of funding opportunities that we are looking at to help with the relief with the impacts of COVID. The first one here is our Emergency Solutions Grant, the ESG, about $3.1 million that will be focused on homelessness support, prevention and rapid rehousing. We also have our Community Development Block Grant, the CDBG, about $2.2 million. And this, we're looking to use this to address needs of vulnerable populations and neighborhood reactivation. We also have the Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Program, a little over $350,000. This, we're looking to use this to fund the Public Information Officer for the Police Department, and then reimbursement for police overtime and other personnel expenses from COVID. Also, still working on with the CARES Act that's being handled by the Kent County, and there is a revised estimate from that about sitting right now $11.1 billion and determining, the county is working on determining the final disbursement of how that would look to local municipalities within Kent County. And then also, we're waiting on to get an update and a final status of the state allocation of the CARES Act and what that would look like and how that would impact the city of Grand Rapids as well. And then there's also ongoing conversations with local business through business retention and expansion meetings, so some other potential funding opportunities with that level. And so, overall, the estimated total, as it stands as right now, for some relief funding is about $16.8 million. And then also, we've started the Hyper Local Purchasing Pilot Program that began on June 1st, and this really focuses on area regional bid discounts for all bids over $10,000, and looking at how that would apply in a percentage rate. So, the city of Grand Rapids would be 5%, Kent County 3%, and then State of Michigan's 2%. We are looking to increase MLBE bid discounts from 3% to 9%. Also, looking to increase general target area and neighborhoods of focus-located companies to 7%. And then finally, the utilization of above discounts will allow bidders to achieve the maximum of 9% discount. Previously, it was at, it was capped at 5%. And with that, I'll turn over to some questions. That is the update that we have today for COVID.
Great, thank you, Allison. All right, so Commissioners, any questions? I'll start with Commissioner Jones and then Commissioner Repart.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to Allison for the presentation. Just wondering, have we been in, in contact with the state? I know that it's a trickle-down thing, but I know that they, they're sitting on like over $2 billion that they have not spent, because they just, obviously, it's, you know, it's specific in terms of what you can spend the money on. But any chance whatsoever we can get any of those funds from the state? Or would we have to go through the county who would then go to the state? How does that work?
So, Ms. Farrell, Allison, your mic is still still off while she's turning on. So, yes, we have been in contact with both county and the state. We have gone through our legislative office as well as our Emergency Operations Center. So, we're trying to get the same consideration we have from the county. We have our identified funding needs already made. They just not have determined what their process is going to be. And I'll ask Ms. Farrell or Ms. Farrell to add to my remarks.
So, this is Allison, and I just want to make a note that we are still waiting for feedback and direction on what that additional CARES Act funding from the state allocation looks like. And that's what I know at this moment. I will turn over to Karen, if she has anything else to add to that.
It's like our CFO has turned the camera on as well. Ms. Clarence, do you have anything else to add? We, unfortunately, cannot hear you. I don't, your mic's not working.
Okay, I think I figured it out. Yeah, we have not received notice from the state as far as what to expect or their method of allocation. With the county, last week, they did identify $15 million that is going to come to local municipalities. We have, we had a revised portion of that at $11.1 million, as Allison described on the slide. However, the county hasn't set up their, their method of distribution or how, how they're going to count for it. Right now, speculation is it might be a reimbursement approach, which, you know, we do the expenses and then they'll reimburse us for them. Obviously, you know, we want to get that money out there to work. It's also challenging for us, because we're also dealing with an economic downturn. So, we're still trying to work with the county on, you know, helping them through what they're going to do for their allocation method, so.
Any other questions? Did I see Commissioner Repart, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just, you know, my question is really around, you know, the rapid rehousing and all this, and the CDBG funds. How are we going to, how or when or indicate what that's going to go toward? And, you know, I think people's unemployment is coming to an end, and stimulus checks are spent, and that's an opportunity that we have to support people directly. So, I'm just, I know that we've, the money that we've reallocated it, but how and when can we communicate how it's going to be utilized?
And so, Mr. Long, turn his mic on.
Thank you, City Manager. I'll start, and I'll also let Ms. Bahatch, who is on the call, respond as well. So, the Economic Resiliency and Response Work Group has a preliminary, had a preliminary allocation plan set up that would deal with residential resiliency, and then we received additional dollars. So, we're recalculating the allotment and the allocation. County and I will be working on that with the team. So, and Ms. Bahatch is working on the process to get funds released. Now, I'd like County to amplify my answer.
Thank you. We are actually today in a position to be able to submit the documentation to HUD. You got Department of Housing and Urban Development. We had to actually put out for, sort of post, a broad proposed use of those funds, and that was published, and a comment period has been completed. And so, we're finalizing all those documents to turn into HUD. They will then review that, what's called a substantial plan amendment, and respond to us that it's, it's appropriate. And then as soon as we get grant agreements from them, we'll be able to actually get the cash in, more in hand. We don't know how long it will take HUD to get us our agreements at this point. We do know that their response of whether or not they agree that it's appropriate in terms of your proposed use, we're hearing that that's occurring very quickly. But in terms of when the actual agreements get executed and sent to us, we're not quite sure how long that will take. But in the meantime, as Mr. DeLong indicates, we are preparing the processes that will be required in order to allocate the funds. We're working on those applications now in community development, and we'll be ready to actually put them out in advance of actually, we'll start that process even before HUD gives us the release of funds, so that we, we are, you know, keeping things moving along.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bahatch. And just to confirm, those will, they need to be utilized in our target areas?
Yes. I propose that they be in our community development target areas, with some resources being more narrowly focused, supporting the third-world equity initiatives.
Okay, thank you, thanks. All right, any final questions? I know we're going on almost three hours already together, so I want to, maybe before we move to this next batch of topics related to recreational marijuana, maybe take a five-minute break, so that anyone who needs to use the restroom or grab a bite to eat or something can do that. So, Commissioners, are you, are you okay with just taking a really brief recess or break and then coming back in five minutes? And then we'll pick up the next four items related to recreational marijuana. And then we also have an item related to housing and a liquor license request. And then just a reminder, we do have an executive session. For those of you who are on legislative team with me, we may need to push that back. And so, I'll, I'd like to still get to public safety by 3:00, because I know we have community members here, so I'll try to move us along during this next session. So, I see heads shaking, so we'll go ahead and take a five-minute break, and we'll be back together at 12:49. All right, thanks. Okay, I see Commissioner Park, Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Asasi, Commissioner Moody. Can't see everyone, because I have a power.
Thank you, Mayor.
There you are. Thank you, Commissioner. All right, so can I get started then? While, if you're not speaking, I'll ask you to turn your microphone on mute, so that we don't have some background noise. And I'll turn it over to our city manager to kick off this next present, or it looks like, it looks like Deputy City Manager, Mr. Eric Delong, will get us started on this.
Point of order, Mayor.
Yep.
I know we have a couple other relatively quick agenda items. Is it possible to move those up, just in case we have people watching our meeting for the decision on those? In light of how long it took with the earlier topics, and this likely will take a little bit long, too.
That's a great idea. Can I get this powerpoint taken down for a moment, so that I can see everybody? And if there is agreement to do that, I'll, I'll take up Items Seven and Eight, and get those out of the way. I see thumbs up. Is everyone comfortable with that? Okay, let's go ahead and do that then. Thank you, Commissioner, for making that recommendation. So let's also.
That was the, that was the thumb, by the way. Just wanted to clarify.
I see heads shaking and thumbs, so I think we're good. So why don't we, why don't we take up eight first? So this is a resolution approving a request from GR Noir LLC for redevelopment district liquor license to be located at 35 Division Avenue South. Can I get a motion?
So move.
Thank you, moved and supported. Do you want to add anything to this? It's pretty straightforward.
Well, it's not, it's not exactly straightforward. We approved a liquor license for them before. There's some, there's a lot of confusion inside the development district areas. And so we approved an ordinance where there'd be some, be some legislative fixes. And Tim Kelly and I, and Jessica would have been discussing how we get past this. We may have to look this forward. So we're pushing it through here. It has a good, has something to do with redevelopment and new construction. So, and I've been advising Commissioner Jones as we've been going through the process. So we'll see how this one goes.
Yeah, thank you. I, I know that we've had this once before in the past as well. And we talked about it at our recent DDA meeting, and we did approve it around that body. So. Any final questions or comments? All right, I have the city clerk call the, call the vote.
Commissioner Repart?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Asasi?
Yes.
And Mayor Bliss?
Yes, it carries. All right, next that will take us to a resolution approving a contract for Housing Practice Leader Services with Housing Next in the amount of $75,000. Can I get a motion?
Support.
All right, moved and supported. So this is an extension with Housing Next to continue some of the work that we're actively engaged in. I'll turn it to Mr. Delong to add any additional details.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate your consideration of this. Housing Next and Mr. Ryan Kepatrick has served us well over the past year and has delivered, there is a process of delivering several outcomes since we're involved in that first contract. So our experience has been good, and we've developed a work program for him to continue that work through Housing Next over the next year. So the outcomes that will be focused on in fiscal '21 include strategic outreach to owners of existing affordable housing, to, and to work to ensure that there are opportunities in that area, to support planning staff throughout the City of Grand Rapids' master plan updates. So we're getting started with that, and housing is obviously a key component of that. So Mr. Kepatrick and Housing Next would support there. Also to support the re-engagement of the Grand Rapids Community Affordable Housing Fund, and to establish the framework for that. To catalyze new development across neighborhoods using the information that has been accumulated this year, move into an actual development of new, new projects. And then finally, to utilize data coming from the 2020 Housing Need Assessment to share information with our departments and move our affordable housing efforts further down the road. So with that, I recommend your consideration of this. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Asasi?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one question. Can, oh, Mr. Delong, can you confirm? I know this was shared in the past, but the date when we will receive the, so will we receive one report first, and then this extension will be another? I just want to clarify that.
We are, we're going to get Ryan back in the month of July to give a report on the housing need study. So I'll confirm the date when I have it finalized.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, Commissioners, any other questions or comments? All right, I'll ask the city clerk to call the vote on this.
Commissioner Lanier? I'll come back to her. Commissioner Jones?
I'm sorry, yes.
Oh, sorry, your screen is dark. Okay, got it. Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Asasi?
Yes.
Commissioner Repart?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, it carries. All right, Commissioners, so then I'll, I'll take us back up to Item Three. So for those of you, we have four items related to marijuana and recreational marijuana and waivers. So we'll go back up to Item Three, and we have Three, Four, Five, and Six, if you're following along in our agenda packet. And so we'll go back up to Three, and it will start with a presentation provided by city staff who've been working on these items. So I will turn it over to, who's leading this, Mr. Delong?
So I will start out, unless the city manager has words to of introduction. Otherwise, then we'll go through, and the team actually will be making the majority of the presentation. So I'll get started. The, what we're going to be talking about today are the four items the mayor has mentioned that we'll be doing, going through the PowerPoint that will give everybody an overview of the recommendations of the Cannabis Justice Work Group. And then we'll talk about the action items that are on your agenda today that will get, get our recommendations introduced and set up for City Commission consideration in July. So the items have been prepared by a broad team, the Cannabis Justice Work Group, which we'll talk about during the presentation, and we'll get into that presentation now. And before we do that, or as we're doing that, let's say that, I want to also say that there's a, you'll learn about our social equity plan as well as part of this process. And that's what the first number on Item Three is about, and also the draft plan is attached for review. So with that, we'll get started with the presentation. Then, so at the February 25th City Commission meeting, there were several questions that were asked, and we also will follow-up questions. And we have provided answers to those questions. The work group took those seriously. And has also, in addition to providing answers, has worked to weave the, those answers into the presentation. So some background. So we have lived this together, so we know this in our community. So there were several acts that were adopted. And the key dates on this slide are that the city began accepting and processing medical cannabis applications in April 2019. And then in October of the same year, City Commission decided to allow recreational cannabis facilities but on a deferred timeline to provide opportunity to be ready for, for that adventure. So in November one, the state began accepting recreational cannabis licenses. And then again, we had the February 25 meeting, and then on March 17, the City Commission approved a six-month moratorium to give us opportunity to be more intentional about a social equity program for cannabis uses. So with that, I'll move on to Sierra Atkins, Miss Sierra Atkins, who will take us through the next part of this.
Thank you, Mr. Delong. This slide is to explain why you will encounter two different terms throughout the presentation today, cannabis and marijuana. The city used this as a great opportunity to lead with equity and to provide education, because as we worked together as a work group, we discovered that not everyone had an understanding of the history behind the two, which I'll explain now. Whenever possible, throughout this document, throughout the presentation and recommendations, you will see us use the term cannabis, which is the scientific name for the plant, and it's been used in social equity programs across the nation to remove the historical stigma and negative connotations that's typically associated with the word marijuana. Many of, some of you may know that this is a term for cannabis of the international origin from where it's grown, and it has historically been used to stigmatize brown and black communities. The term marijuana was introduced into our lexicon through the Marijuana Tax Act of 1937. It has since been the prevailing term. So you will see it most often used in legal and zoning freight works. To our city's credit, our legal department is working to remove the word marijuana and use cannabis wherever possible. Next. So the Cannabis Justice Work Group, as Mr. Delong stated, we were created in around March 2020. And this has been a very talented interdepartmental task force. We've been led by Mr. Delong. We have a staff representation from planning, from the legal department, Office of Equity and Engagement Oversight and Public Accountability, as well as economic development. So this was a great team and a lot of talent put together in the recommendations that you have before you today. I will now turn, introduce Ms. Stout.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. So the work group got together, we talked a little bit about, a lot about, our circle of concern. So what did we care about? What do we want to see accomplished in the community, right? And so economic justice really centered those conversations. We also had conversations around circle of control. What do we have direct legal authority over? A good example of that is zoning ordinances. And then we also looked at circle of influence. While we might not have direct control, we do have influence. So an example of that is creating a nonprofit for some of the broader social equity goals, as well as, you know, we have influence in Lansing for more just state laws as well. Next slide. So our goals are here. Establish social equity expectations and voluntary commitments for applicants for all recreational cannabis license types. Utilize strategies that enhance the growth, development of local, small, and emerging businesses, so they are not left out of this wealth creation opportunity. Supply or diversity, which also creates wealth and is very important to us. And reduce as many barriers as possible to entry into the cannabis industry. And previously, in, in today's meeting, we talked about also increasing opportunities in neighborhoods of focus. For those listening, those are 17 census tracts in the City of Grand Rapids, with the greatest disparity pretty much across all indicators, education, wealth creation, health. And last but definitely not least, is allowing low-hanging fruit now, what can we do now, and more complex elements by October of this year. So the, I'm sorry. So these social equity policies and recommendations being presented to you are carefully created within the guidelines of a legal framework. And so we're, we, we worked hard to find the intersection of all four components. The first component, equity, in the form of social equity policy that you'll hear more about today. Licensing in the form of an amended ordinance that embeds social equity elements and creates incentives designed to achieve community impact we desire. Nonprofit, the establishment of a nonprofit by the city that will act to accomplish broader social equity outcomes with fewer constraints than what the city has. And lastly, zoning, that will permit certain uses now and more complex uses later. Each of these four elements interact in a very precise way to achieve the goals established by the City Commission. They, excuse me, they deliver those outcomes in a way that fast-tracks some recreational uses now, and again, permits more later within a viable and focused social equity framework. Next, I'll give it back to Deputy City Manager Delong. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stout. And so here is the proposed timeline. We'll introduce it here, and we'll come back to it at the end of the presentation. So you can see that July 7 is a significant day. We will have the social equity policy before you for consideration. We'll also have the licensing ordinance, the zoning ordinance for adoption, and also licensing for adoption. And we intend to be able to introduce the beginning process of forming the nonprofit. So these dates are important, because we are able then to lead adoption and be able to move forward with the fast-track items now. And that will also give us the appropriate space to work on the deliberative items, which are the more complex things having to do with retail marijuana and other, other uses. So the team has worked very carefully, as Ms. Stout said, to have, have a plan that achieves social equity outcomes in a framework that meets all the, all the statutory requirements that are present here in Michigan. So I'm really proud of the work of the team, the collaboration, to get to this point. And I'd like Kristen Rewa now to begin talking about the legal framework, and then we'll get deeper into the recommendations. So, Ms. Rewa?
Thank you, Mr. Delong. So some of the laws that we encountered and had to navigate through as we enacted our medical marijuana framework, which we call sort of marijuana 1.0 or cannabis 1.0, are the same as we embark on our now second phase looking at recreational cannabis. So we do have constitutional requirements. We need to ensure that we abide by due process requirements, Commerce Clause, things like that. We also do need to be aware of, as we embark on social equity plans and practices, that we as a government do have some limitations under state and federal constitution and laws. In particular, the Article One, Section 26, the anti-affirmative action clause of our constitution. We also need to make sure that as we use our public funds, that we are doing it in appropriate, in an appropriate manner in accordance with state law. So for example, we cannot loan credit, and any user fees that we use tied to this regulatory structure have to be tied to the cost of administration. Finally, and this came up a lot as we embarked on our medical marijuana, medical cannabis processes, is we need to recognize there are other statutes that exist that limit what we, as a local government, can do through preemption. And one of the big ones in this space, as we encountered it, you know, last year, is the Local Government Labor Regulatory Limitation Act, which limits what cities can do as a regulatory agency in terms of employment matters. So we cannot, for example, require living wages or fringe benefits or overstep in terms of what's required during a hiring process. So that, that's, that was already sort of in existence, but as we embark on recreational cannabis, there are some new requirements that we need to keep in mind as we develop our policies, ordinances, and other framework. So under the MRTMA, that's the Recreational Cannabis Act that was enacted by the state, we have to keep in mind that that law prohibits ordinances that are called unreasonably impractical. That is to say that they require too much investment or so onerous that a reasonable business, reasonably prudent business person would not do these. The other thing to keep in mind is that, to the extent that cities limit the number of licenses that could be issued within the municipality, the MRTMA requires that we institute a competitive process to select the, the applicants that are intended to be the best applicants and cannabis operators within the municipality. Another sort of big development that was good for us and is important to point out is that the statewide, the state-level marijuana regulatory agency expanded the state-level social equity program effective June 1. So in the initial phase of the state-level equity program, they identified what are called disproportionately impacted communities. And at that time, the city of Grand Rapids did not qualify. But the state went back, sort of back and reviewed its qualifications and now changed some of the requirements, specifically lowered the poverty threshold from thirty percent to twenty percent. And Grand Rapids now qualifies. So under state law, Grand Rapids is identified as a disproportionately impacted community in terms of the effect on the, of the prohibition and enforcement of prohibition related to cannabis. So that means that more people can now qualify as a state-level equity applicant, either as being residents of the city of Grand Rapids or having prior cannabis convictions. So that allows more people to participate in our area in Grand Rapids, both as residents and within the municipality. It saves them a little bit of money, provides them a little more technical support. And I believe with that, I am turning it back. Oh, no, I have one more. There was a question too about licensing caps and, you know, what are other cities doing? So we did a review of what some of the other municipalities are doing in the state in terms of licensing caps. And here's a quick little graph of that. There are some that do have caps for recreational cannabis specifically. Ann Arbor, for example, has a cap of twenty eight each on retailers' micro-business consumption. Detroit was one that was brought up. Right now Detroit has opted out of all recreational cannabis regulation until June thirty, or excuse me, July thirty first, twenty twenty. However, I did speak with their city attorney team that's helping develop their plan. I do know that they are looking at developing some sort of fifty percent residency requirement for their licenses, though it's unclear at this point whether that's going to be a cap or not. So Detroit has medical cannabis caps. But at this point, there's really not been a publicly stated plan as to whether Detroit's going to have recreational cannabis caps. Interestingly enough, one city actually removed their caps. So, and I believe that was, oh, which city was that? I think it was Flint. Yeah, so the city of Flint actually had medical caps in place. And then when they instituted a sixty-day emergency ordinance, actually eliminated their caps as they reviewed recreational. So this is just some information to provide you to show there are some differences among all the cities. The cities look at sort of what works best for them. I think in what I had seen in my review is, in a lot of instances, caps were instituted, I would say more on the back end, because growth was not necessarily limited through zoning like the city did, like the city of Grand Rapids did. So in some instances, there was already a sort of an explosion and caps were instituted to sort of tamp that down to a more manageable growth within those municipalities. With that, now I believe I'm turning it back over to Mr. DeLong.
Yes, you are, Ms. Rewa. So these are the recommendations that we'll be walking through now. So presenters will take you through a description of the social equity policy about creating a nonprofit. We'll have presenters talk about the licensing framework. And that will deal with zoning and other considerations that are related to zoning. So in all, the Justice Work Group makes seven recommendations. And I'd like now for us to get started with a review of recommendation number one, which is having to do with social equity. So with that, Ms. Atkins, if you could come back on.
Thank you, Mr. DeLong. So within the legal framework, as just described by Ms. Rewa, the city developed two different application tracks. As we know, different members of our community may have been affected by the war on drugs differently. Or some members of our community may not have been impacted by the war on drugs at all. So we know everyone is situated differently. So we wanted to develop a policy that accounts for those different situations. So first, I'll explain the equity applicant track. So this is criteria meant to promote and encourage participation in this industry by people from communities that have been impacted by the war on drugs. So some of the criteria, we established a formula where the applicant needs to meet three of six criteria. Some of those criteria are as follows. An eligible cannabis conviction. And that could be from the applicant or members in the applicant's household, such as parents, grandparents, siblings, existing spouse, et cetera. Income thresholds, as defined by HUD, from five of the last ten years. Negative housing experiences or consequences due to the war on drugs. For instance, loss of housing vouchers or not being able to receive certain housing because of your record. As well as other business, employment or educational impacts. We know that you can apply for a fast foot or you could have received a termination from employment due to failing a drug test for cannabis, et cetera. So we really tried to be innovative and very inclusive of the different areas in which people have been impacted by the war on drugs and subsequent policies from the war on drugs. Moving to the next application track, that is the application advancing equity. This application track is really for someone who may not have had those direct life experiences as defined under the equity applicant. But they still want to promote equity and understand the value and ensuring equity as we turn a previously illegal business legal. So participation in the cannabis social equity program is how you create an application advancing equity. There are a total of forty-five points that could be awarded in the following areas that I'll briefly describe. Local ownership, and we were innovative here. So we didn't just look at ownership of the actual cannabis business. We actually looked at whether or not there, the ownership in the underlying real estate where the business is located. So those are two avenues in which equity could be advanced based on the ownership percentages. Another really crucial piece is the workforce diversity. We understand that people are just getting up off the ground. So we have intentional strategies to recruit, hire and promote employees who will qualify under the equity applicant criteria. So for the first year, that's how they would be evaluated. For all subsequent years, the workforce diversity evaluation would come from recruitment efforts as well as hiring and retention percentages. So that we can ensure that the employers have a fair and just shot at hitting these targets. Another important area is supplier diversity. So we're going to look at the annual spend and compare the operational costs with engagement with minority business enterprises. And then we're going to look at business development. And we know that business development can occur on a wide spectrum. So we try to account for that within our policy. So business development could be business mentor, protege, talking to someone, showing them the ropes. And then it can be more intense where there's actual incubation of a cannabis-related business or a non-cannabis-related business. Because we know that there will be a lot of ancillary businesses that pop up as the cannabis businesses continue to grow. And then lastly, we have the community investment program. This is a great program because the Community Investment Fund will allow, will be operated by the nonprofit. Because per Ms. Rewa's presentation, there are just limitations that the city can't get around. But we still see, but there's value in those things happening. So the nonprofit will be able to affect positive community change within communities who've been affected by war on drugs. So those things would be like grants or loans, other things that Ms. Bibi will describe in the nonprofit. So in all, that is, those are the two equity tracks, equity applicant and the application advancing equity. I will now turn it over to Ms. Amber Bibi.
Thank you, Sierra. I apologize if my camera's not working at the moment, but again, I'll try to be quick. A city-created nonprofit is authorized by the Home Rule Cities Act, state law. The nonprofit could be, would be used as a vehicle to bridge the gap between what the city can and cannot do as a municipality. It will add flexibility to the talent and the execution of initiatives and will involve community stakeholders and citizens. Similarly, it will reduce legal exposure. And we're not suggesting that a nonprofit will be doing the city's work. It will simply be helping the city with accomplishing its goals and objectives. On this slide, you will see several sample desired initiatives or outcomes. I will not read through all of those individually. I'm happy to answer questions about them. But those are listed there and I believe Commissioners, that you will be provided with these slides. Next slide. While there is some minor overlap in the types of initiatives that can be offered between the city and the nonprofit, as you can see, more fall into the nonprofit column. Next slide. There was a question related to whether the city has used or has been affiliated with a nonprofit in the past or whether it is still affiliated with one now. Some examples are shown here on this slide, along with another example there at the bottom, that is being used by our neighbor to the south, to help advance its own city and community-based initiative. And I turn it on to you, Blee.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Bibi. One of the working group's recommendations is to amend the existing licensing ordinance in order to enable certain features of the proposed cannabis social equity policy. Licensing already is mandatory for all cannabis-related businesses and would continue to be. Since licensing is an ongoing requirement, including periodic license renewals, it is a suitable vehicle to authorize the cannabis social equity policy, including related voluntary commitments, responsibilities and benefits. Under the policy, licensed applicants would have the opportunity to be recognized as equity applicants based on having experienced specific harms due to the war on drugs and other factors. Additionally, applications advancing equity would be determined based on voluntary commitments under a point system. Applicants would have the opportunity to commit to certain outcomes related to their workforce suppliers and support for community equity initiatives. The point system would determine each applicant's placement in a tier of administratively-reviewed zoning applications considered during a specified period of time. For planning commission-reviewed applications, the point system would determine the sequence of consideration. Next slide, please. The initial license fee would be discounted for equity applicants. Both equity applicants and applications advancing equity would be prioritized for processing of their initial one-year license application. In subsequent years, multi-year licenses would be available to those who meet operating standards and continue with some significant voluntary equity commitments. Lastly, I want to note that additional policies will be needed to establish and implement the cannabis social equity program. This time, I'll turn the presentation over to Ms. Turkleson.
Thank you, Lou. Good afternoon, Commissioners. So relative to zoning the fast track, there are two approaches that we are recommending. The fast-track approach or the low-hanging fruit is an effort to advance zoning amendments for certain non-retail recreational marijuana uses. So specifically, it would continue to allow medical facilities under the current ordinance, as we do with the current ordinance. And it would also allow non-retail recreational marijuana facilities. That would include administrative review for those types of facilities. Whereas right now growers and processors are currently special land uses. We do continue, we will preserve current separation distances. We will preserve the current waiver process and criteria. And we will preserve the current sensitive uses and separation distances. But to be clear, this amendment would not allow for the conversion of or addition of, to convert from provisioning centers to recreational retailers or allow new recreational retailers. The deliberative approach is where we believe that there's some additional discussion that's needed on some of the more complex zoning items. So we anticipate this approach, Mr. DeLong noted it would be in July, that we would begin discussing with the commission about whether to allow micro businesses and recreational retailers modify or eliminate current sensitive uses, separation distances and waiver requirements, and determine whether to permit designated consumption establishments and marijuana events. Next slide, please. At the last meeting, the City Commission did ask whether or not we could permit adult-use retailers. So the Planning Commission did provide a recommendation to the City Commission to permit adult-use retailers as a special land use. However, it's not recommended at this time and that we move forward with permitting the adult-use retailers when we are able to address the other land use considerations that I mentioned previously. Next slide. So waivers. Waivers have had significant concern and frustration expressed at all levels. At this point, we are recommending that we leave the waiver and sensitive use discussion to the deliberative approach or the deliberative process. And we're recommending that for several reasons. First of all, we have completed the medical marijuana application queue. And it's unlikely, although not completely impossible, that we would receive additional applications, given the state's capitalization requirements for medical marijuana licenses and the city's move towards recreational marijuana. Also, none of the approved non-retail medical facilities, the growers, processors, secure transporters and state de-compliance facilities, required waivers. So as proposed, all of the approved medical facilities could convert to recreational without an issue. Waivers, as I've mentioned, are really linked to the defined sensitive uses and separation distances. So we really think that it would be important for us to find consensus on how we're going to address these land use considerations before we make any recommendation-specific waivers. So for those reasons, we think it would be prudent to wait and address the waivers with the additional land use considerations or issues during that deliberative process. So for now, next slide, please. We are proposing a two-step process. So step one, as I mentioned, is to leave the waiver process as is. We also recommend rescinding the City Commission park policy waiver and allowing the Planning Commission review process to review any possible park waivers. However, again, we do not have any pending applications and it's unlikely we will receive more. Step two would be that deliberative approach where we would look at or consider modifying or eliminating waivers in that deliberative process. Couple of helpful things, I think, eliminating the waivers would result in a one-thousand-foot separation between most marijuana facilities and the defined sensitive uses. So that would be, that would be an issue for us if we were to simply remove it without, modify the waiver process without discussing sensitive uses. And I believe with that, I will hand it back to Mr. Canfield. Or I'm sorry, Mr. DeLong.
Thank you, Ms. Turkleson. And thank you also, all of our, all of our workgroup members who have presented so well today. So we have four or three other action items on our agenda today having to do with the licensing ordinance and the zoning ordinance and also the elimination of the City Commission consideration of park waivers. We can, and this sets up the stage for action on July seventh for adoption of those items. So the, we can take questions now, if you would like, on this. Or we could take questions through consideration of the action items that are before you. We're open to either approach.
Thank you. Can I, can I get the PowerPoint removed so I can see everyone? Thank you. So Commissioners, do you have a preference? Do you want to ask questions now or do you want me to bring up? Yes, I'm seeing heads shaking. Yes. So why don't we ask questions about any of the items presented? And then after we have our questions answered, I'll move forward with reading the next three resolutions. And then if we have additional comments about each of those individual resolutions, we can address those then. All right. So with that, I will turn to my colleagues, Commissioner Jones. I'll let you get us started.
Thank you, Mayor. I am very appreciative of everything that's been brought forward. In particular, the specificity that was provided in the presentation. I think it's very clear in terms of what the options are before us, as well as what we've done thus far. And so thank you to staff for that. Looking at slide number fourteen, the summary of recommendations, like a couple of things I want to ask about. One is, I would really push for and advocate for, I know that we've, there's a suggestion that we rescind waivers for parks. I'd like to advocate that that also includes churches. I think a number of us have talked about that already. I think we, a number of us have talked about that already and would like to include churches as part of that, that resolution in terms of rescinding waivers. Also, I want to make it known that I'm very much in favor of item number four, which fast-tracks zoning ordinance amendments to allow medical and rec growers, processors, safety compliance, and secure transporters via admin review. I think that's wise to engage in that now. And also, I want to put it out there that I would be in favor of having some conversations as I'm, again, open to the possibility of fast-tracking some rec retailers who have followed my Vida thus far. I say that because I think there's been an opportunity for them to kind of show, you know, to, to match up their actions with what they put on paper. And if they've been, if they've been good stewards, then perhaps we should have conversations about them being fast-tracked into the rec space. So that's all I want to put out there.
Okay. Thank you. I, I don't know if there were, did you have specific questions or you just wanted to?
The, the one question out of that is, why weren't churches included as part of the discussion around rescinding waivers? I know, again, parks is mentioned specifically, but why not churches?
So what, what we're actually recommending in, of having to do with waivers is to rescind city commission consideration of park waivers. So the park waiver would still be in place, the city, but the, instead of us taking our time talking about it, we would not do that anymore, and the planning commission would consider it. So then we would have a larger discussion about waivers and sensitive uses and everything in, as part of the deliberative process where we can be sure that we're getting the right, the right answers that everybody wants. So it's, it's really more of something that city commission can do now to eliminate something that has been, I would argue, very confusing. And I don't, I don't know how much it's really added to the process. So it was a recommendation to move that forward without, that it doesn't, that doesn't affect the zoning ordinance or anything else. It just affects city commission consideration of that particular use.
Kristen, did you want to weigh in on that at all or?
I think Mr. DeLong explained it well. The, the only thing I might add is that we were really looking for areas where we felt that there might be some consensus with the commission. And we understand that sensitive uses, waivers, and separation distances needs a more deliberate discussion with commission to try to find consensus.
Yeah, thank you. So Commissioner, my understanding with, so when we created this whole waiver process, especially around parks, because the parks are owned by the city, we decided that we would create this policy where those would, objections would be heard by the full body. And my understanding is what's been happening is there's multiple, and I know we've talked about this around this table before, there's multiple opportunities for people to weigh in, but then the planning commission is also hearing objections to the distance requirements to parks. So there's, individuals are feeling the need to weigh in at multiple meetings, and it's, it's been a bit confusing to a number of folks. So this would clean that process up. Is that, is that right, Ms. Turkelson? Did I explain that?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right. Other questions or comments? Commissioner O'Connor?
Thank you, Mayor. So I appreciate the work of staff to bring this forward as we need to talk about it. I certainly am in support of the administrative approvals for the four recommendations. And I just want to thank Commissioner Jones for his openness to a discussion around allowing some medical provisioning centers to transition to recreational sales on a fast track. I just want to make sure that everyone understands that when the MRTMA passed, there's a specific provision in the MRTMA which does not allow for a recreational-only provisioning center to come into existence until after December of 2021. And so as we have some medical provisioning centers, which currently are either approved or in the approval process, that, you know, we would only be able to allow those facilities to make the transition. And I think, given the, you know, the dwindling queue of folks in line at the planning commission, I know that more work needs to be done around some of the other, with the waivers and the microbusinesses and the other adjunct categories of business type. But I don't, you know, understand or see the harm in allowing the, you know, those folks who with fidelity followed the rules through the MyVida process and done the things to get their recreational provisioning, or their medical provisioning centers up to speed, why we can't create a track to get those folks into the recreational space if they do so. I'd also like to remind this commission that as we continue to talk about the need for additional resources in our community to address other concerns that we have, we do not begin collecting any tax money until recreational provisioning centers are, are online. While we fast-track the other, other items, we don't, you know, have the ability to collect general fund dollars, which we have great discretion over their, their ability to be used. So I just think it's, I think it's important that we give opportunity, and especially as I said before, as we look to how we as a municipality can create an environment for small businesses to be successful, especially given global, the global pandemic and we've been kind of bent over backwards in other spaces. I think it, you know, it behooves us to try to give opportunity to these businesses to create jobs and bring in tax revenue.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Lanier?
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Mr. DeLong and team, for the very thorough presentation. And the write-up was really thorough as well, so thank you for that. I have a few different questions, just to make sure I'm understanding things well. I'll start with the waiver. So I understand the, how it was just defined, the opportunity before us regarding the waivers. And Commissioner Jones's question regarding why communities of faith were not included. But I think we're talking about two different things. I know, Mayor, you have advocated, I've been very supportive of removing waivers altogether. But it sounds like the agenda item isn't removing the waivers altogether, it's removing the approval process for the waivers. And so I'm, I guess, I'd like to advocate for, as we get to that agenda item, for us removing waivers altogether for all sensitive uses and locations. And so then that just kind of eliminates and I think take care of what Commissioner Jones you were asking about as well, because then, without there being waivers, there isn't a process that the planning commission nor the city commission would have to go through for any of those waivers. It would just be automatic that if a facility lands within 1,000 feet of those locations, that they would not be considered. So that's one point I wanted to make. I, I'm a little foggy on the portion that was presented tied to the social equity. There were two tracks. I, I feel like I'm understanding the content from that. What I'm not grasping is at what point in the process does this social equity or these two tracks become activated? So what we tried to do at the onset for medical was to include the MyVida, which helped us, well, our attempt was to try to infuse some equity components. And I think, you know, we've, at least from what I've read, and I think this is a point of question for me too, that there were 17 MyVidas that, that increase or that has 25% of ownership, local ownership by Grand Rapids residents. And so I'm wondering if this social equity, the two tracks for social equity, will replace MyVida? Or is this kind of a supplement to existing MyVida? And then I guess if, so, so I have a question about MyVida. I know that 17 have the local ownership, but I am also curious if we only have 17 MyVida, because I know we, there are other components to the MyVida. So someone could have chosen something that wasn't tied to local ownership. So I just want to make sure I have a clear number of how many MyVidas have been implemented or agreed upon. And then the other question that I have, I know I was going to recommend that instead of 25% of ownership through the MyVida, that it increases to 35%. But then I heard the, the statement about Detroit moving to 50%. So I'm just curious to know what is the city's perspective on, excuse me, what came, what's coming out of Detroit and how feasible they think that is? And then the other piece is wondering if we could use residency as well as the equity applicant definitions that were outlined in the social, social equity component within the MyVida in order to increase local ownership and maybe even add another component that if you, if you're local plus you meet these equity applicant definitions. And then I, I think, you know, to the point that I was making earlier about the A3 and it being a document that at a glance you can kind of see really complex issues in a more simplified fashion, I think this has been really helpful to get robust information kind of to, to support. But it would be great to kind of see it in, in a, in a format that allows it to be digested for not only this audience, this body, but for others who may be trying to understand what's happening with the, with the cannabis ordinance. And then I think I'll stop there. I have a few more questions, but I'll gather some thoughts and come back around because I've already asked quite a few now.
Thank you, Commissioner. I will start with the answers and then we'll rely on other members of the team to assess. So in terms of the waiver, we're not removing, again, we're not removing the waivers themselves. We're just dealing with the city commission consideration of the park waivers.
Correct. But I'm, I'm asking for it to be removed, I guess, is, is the statement that I was making. I understood what you were offering, but I'm, but I'm suggesting otherwise.
What we want to have long-term is, near-term, is a discussion about doing that. Well, there are complexities that we have to work out. So for example, some of the medical marijuana dispensaries receive waivers to be where they're at. If we eliminate the waivers, then if they want to convert to medical or to recreational, they may not be able to convert. So there are land use issues that we have to work through in order to do that. That's why we have suggested that would be a better conversation for the deliberative approach. So we get it right and don't, don't mess anybody up and we're able to accomplish, accomplish that goal. In terms of when does this, how, how does the social equity work? What does it activate? That's a good way to put it. It activates when, in two ways. One, zoning applications and licensing applications. So the voluntary accumulation of points through the process will determine when you are, when you are eligible for review, both for zoning and licensing. So there'll be a prioritization tier set up. And so those who do accumulate a lot of voluntary points will go first, and those who don't will, will not go first. So that's the answer there. And then the, the MyVidas are for medical. And, and so we have, we still have to evaluate those. Some of those aren't, you know, a year old yet. So we have to evaluate that. The, this process that we're describing here replaces MyVida. And so it's, this is the new approach, and it's also long-term. So if you look, and if we need to go into more detail when we get there to the licensing ordinance, Mr. Canfield can talk about that. But it all, it's, not only is it for initial priority, it's also a long-term relationship where if you maintain your voluntary points, you can actually have a longer-term license. So rather than coming in every year, you could come in, you know, every two years, every three years, depending on your, how you've done with voluntary points. In the licensing piece and the amount of local ownership, I don't want to misspeak, so I think I'll have Mr. Canfield talk about accumulating points. But equity applicants, we define them in two ways. It could be one equity applicant, or it could be a association or consortium of equity applicants to work up to the points to go forward. So, Mr. Canfield, would you like to talk about that explanation?
Sure. And, and one thing I do want to note, and Eric, you were, you were already there, is a, a business that has a majority ownership greater than 50% by people who meet the definition of equity applicant would receive the, the highest level of priority for processing. So, so think of equity applicant as somebody who gets, you know, the most points or the equivalent of the most points that an application advancing equity can receive. We, we mentioned in the presentation some categories across which applicants can earn points. So things like, you know, the, the supplier diversity requirement, things like contributions to local equity initiatives. And so those would be objectively assigned the first year based on the, the commitment. And then in subsequent years, we would look at the actual performance. And that would be used to do things like define the duration of the license. So someone who earns a larger number of points could get a multi-year license, up to three years. And also, you know, priority processing in the, in the renewal queue. So, so think of those two categories, the equity applicant, at least 50% ownership by one or more people. And then the, the point system for the applications advancing equity. And then those are, those would be used not just for a, a limited period of years like MyVida, but on an ongoing basis for those benefits that I described.
Thank you, Mr. Canfield. And then finally, in terms of residency. Residency is dealt with in the equity applicant stage. So it's one of the, one of the criteria within what could be considered to be, who could be considered to be an equity, equity applicant. So, and if, we can, just say I can, could talk a little bit more about that if you wish, but know that it's a component of the equity applicant phase.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioners, other questions? Commissioner Park, did you have your hand up? No? Okay. Commissioner Moody? Nope. Good. Commissioner Asasi? Okay. Oh, we can't hear you, Commissioner.
Thank you. I just want to echo, I think the, the presentation was well put together. I think easy to understand, so I appreciate the, the work that has gone into this and to get to this, to this point. I appreciate your questions on the MyVida, Commissioner Lanier, and I think others had brought that up, Commissioner Jones. My question was, well, I know we can't require certain levels of, of wages and things like that. That was discussed. I can't remember what, what, what act that is. But, you know, one of the things that I have been, been trying to push for myself when people ask me to share different jobs or positions is to make sure that the wages are published. And I think that is another equity consideration. So while we can't require certain, while we can't require, you know, wages and those sorts of things, could we work to require a publication of what those wages are? I had brought up earlier in the day the, the wage gap that exists primarily in white community versus black community workers. And we know that is a significant difference. And oftentimes, the determination of wages is based upon what you're currently making. And when we see compressed wages, especially in communities of color or in lower-wage workers and individuals with less access to education, I just think that, you know, I wonder if that could be for consideration as well. So just wanted to offer that. Don't necessarily expect the answer, but wanted to put that in the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, any, any other questions or comments before we move forward with reading each of the items? Commissioner Lanier?
Yes. So my other items, I, the adopting of the fast-track zoning ordinance, agree, amendments. So the question about the medical and recreational growers, processors, safety compliance, and secure transporters. So the question about the medical and recreational growers, processors, safety compliance and secure transporters. I am supportive of those. I think because we have yet to adopt, excuse me, the um, the um find it right language, social equity component for recreational. I think I'm not ready to add in addition to that um some of the recreational components to um to, I think, provisioning centers is I, is what I thought I heard earlier. But I do think that to Commissioner Jones's point about those who have MyVitas, I would, I would be willing to move these forward with, with having the component of a MyVita because that's the, that's our best equity um opportunity as it exists right now for the recreational growers and medical growers, processors, safety compliance and secure transporters. If, if my memory serves me correctly, and I, I have MyVita pulled up, but I can't get to that now. But I think there are some hiring components that are tied to it. And I think that's the best we can do is in addition to the um ownership components. And so that's part of why I asked the question earlier about how many um, how many MyVitas do we currently have? Because it would help us to kind of see the ratio of how many applicants are, are on their own um doing the MyVitas with their applications. And then I think um, I, I also need a little bit of help with um understanding when the nonprofit would kick in. And it sounds like the nonprofit's role would be then to take whatever revenue that's generated from, from the cannabis, excuse me, industry in our city and doing more community focused external work. But I want to make sure I'm understanding that because it sounds like the social equity two tracks will do the internal work that's tied to cannabis. And um I just want to make sure I'm understanding that too. And then obviously, I know that there would be a lot of work going into the development of a nonprofit. And, you know, what the board, what the makeup and all those good things. But just curious to make sure I'm getting those in the proper buckets too. Uh, I think the last thing is um now that we are at the end of this kind of first queue, which doesn't mean that there won't be additional applicants before we finalize things for um recreational with medical. I am curious to know, um where did we land in terms of um location opportunities? I know we were doing a lot of calculating when we first passed the ordinance about if we have this many, you know, we know that one location, there's a ripple effect in how many others may be available. And this may not be something anyone has the answer to today, but it would be great to know what other um opportunities exist. And I think we had kind of a map showing geographical locations for that.
Thank you, Commissioner. So the um the, we'll look at the, I guess what I'd like to do is to have the work group look at the MyVita. We still have uh what we could, you know, if there's a way to uh move it forward. That isn't our current recommendation, uh but let us take a look at it. But I want to, the MyVita was one approach. And this, a social equity plan and licensing and zoning is a more sophisticated, more robust approach than we had under MyVita. And so the recreational use is valuable. And I think we have an opportunity to advance this equity through recreational licensing. That's why we recommended going the way we are, but you will take a look at it.
Well, Eric, before you go further, I, I just, I guess just fundamentally, the reason why we pushed this pause in this program to rethink things because I, I thought the consensus was the outcomes from the MyVita program was not what we intended. And so I'm wondering why we would have gone through this to, just to stick with what we, we've already done that we said wasn't working before.
So perhaps maybe I'm not understanding what's being presented. I thought I was hearing that MyVita was only tied to existing um medical related licenses. And what we're, what we are considering to fast track are tied to medical related licenses. So if that's the only existing tool we have, because social equity wouldn't be approved until, I think, a later time. And then that's when social equity, if I'm understanding, that's why I was asking those questions of clarification. Once the social equity component is approved, then it would supersede MyVita. And my assumption would be for both medical and recreational.
Right. I, I interpreted your comments being to recreations by using MyVita.
So thank you. I think I understand better now, Commissioner. So the recommendations are for, these recommendations will advance recreational marijuana uses. So many of the existing uh approved medical uses, so grower, a grower, somebody with a grower license, for example, would want to convert to growing for recreational business. And so what this will do is facilitate that. They'll still have their medical license, their old, um and that's where the MyVita came in. But this will transition them into a new business, the recreational business. So that's why uh we've developed the social equity program we have. We take the advantage of this moment and move, move everybody forward into the recreational business with a stronger social equity plan.
So let me, let, let me follow up because I, I think I'm, I think I'm trying to pull it all together. And um I, I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Lanier. So he, here's my, my thought. One, I think the, the social justice policy and plan is a, is a really good plan. And I think it captures a lot of what all of us have been talking about over the last several months. So I'm, I'm comfortable moving forward uh with that. And I'm looking at the timeline and that, moving forward with the social justice policy would be before us in July. And so then I'm also hearing that we do have some medical marijuana retailers who scored high on the MyVita points. So if you remember, we had MyVita and there were, there were a group of um companies that scored high on MyVita that made significant commitments in the community. And what I'm hearing is those companies that made this commitment, if they have followed through with that, they can be fast tracked to convert over to the, to the commitments in the social justice policy that they, they, in my opinion, and this is what I heard, Commissioner Jones, and Commissioner Jones, correct me if I'm wrong, that we do have a, a number of companies who made really strong commitments to social equity. And that is captured in the MyVita. And those would be teed up for this additional uh commitment, kind of conversion to the elements laid out in the social justice policy. And so I think they're.
For which licenses, Mayor, just so that I'm following with you, for which licenses?
For the, for the recreational uh retail, or I'm sorry, the marijuana, medical marijuana retail.
Okay.
They're the ones that completed the MyVita and that's how we teed up who would kind of be first in line at the planning commission. And those are the organizations, if you remember, I think I'm correct just from memory. We also, those were the ones that didn't require a waiver. So we heard the applications, uh how you got points initially when our city clerk was drawing out, out of the, out of the balls to identify who went first. We prioritized um companies that did not need a waiver and companies that had high points on the MyVita and the commitments. And so what we could do is we could start looking at that first batch, identifying those who followed through with those commitments. And then having those be the individual, the companies that are converted to this new social equity policy for the licensing. Is that making sense?
Yes, I, that's, that's a statement of uh intent that I've heard now from, you know, members of the commission. That's not what this says so currently. So we would have to go back and look at it. So I, I think, like, give us, give the work group a chance to go back and think about how we might make that happen. So if there is, because right now, the way it's written, it's only for provisioning, uh, what's up for provisioning? It's only for.
Processors.
Safety testing and uh transportation. So if it's the interest of the majority of the commission to also move some retailers forward, let us think about how we can do that.
No, it's not my interest to also include retailers. And I think, I think that's part of, part of what my question is, and that's why I'm, I'm getting confused because when I look at what you're saying, you want to fast track. The only thing that includes recreational are the growers. So I'm saying.
Four things.
Well, well, let me, let me finish my statement if I could. If I'm, as I'm reading your fast track component, the only thing that has been spelled out that includes recreational were growers. When you say processors, because you didn't include recreational, it's, I, it's safe for me to assume recreational isn't included in that because we know we have an existing ordinance for medical. I guess safety compliance and secure transporters, the same. So I think the lack of spelling that portion out, I'm only, I'm only responding to all medical growers, processors, safety compliance and secure transporters and recreational growers because that's how I'm reading what's written here. And I'm saying I'm in favor of fast tracking all of that, including recreational growers. But I do want there to be a component of, of, I thought MyVita. But if you're saying when we, if we agree to the social equity outcomes that have been identified, then the social equity plan that has the two tracks, either of those I'm okay with. But I think that anyone that's fast tracked out of those four would need to have one of the two of those in order to be fast tracked.
Okay.
But I'm not in favor of moving forward with retailers for recreational at this time because I think we have too much work to do on the equity side of it, including the nonprofit. And how do we fix some things on the backend to move, to move those through on a fast track basis?
Okay. All right. Let me see if there's um additional questions or comments. And then what I think I'll do is I, I think I'll move forward with the next three items. And then we can talk about those specific issues when we have that resolution before us. So um Commissioner O'Connor, and then anyone else have kind of water comments? Okay, Commissioner, Commissioner Jones, I apologize if I misrepresented what you, um, so Commissioner O'Connor?
Yeah, I just, I think it's important to note that we're, you know, as we look at the whole of the cannabis industry, the, the fact that we're saying these users on that do this type of business versus this user who does this type of business, and we're differentiating between them is problematic. Um, and we're treating one, one type of people in this industry different than we're treating a different uh type of business in the industry for this licensing process. And I, I think I, what I'm advocating for is I understand that there is concern about adding additional operators into the space moving forward. But right now, we have a, we have a specified number of operators. We said this, this body and the planning commission has already approved to operate in the cannabis space in Grand Rapids. And I'm not advocating that we, in the short term, allow anymore. I'm saying, let's let the ones that we have here operate to their maximum uh capacity so that they can be successful and provide tax revenue to the people of Grand Rapids and also allow them access to the things that they've said and voted for three times that they are okay with. And in, that will give us, every operator will come into compliance with whatever licensing agreement and social equity outcomes we want. People will comply with the, the thing in local government that we need to do better of, we need to provide people certainty. And we are not providing people certainty to operate. If there are rules that need to be followed, people will follow the rules if we tell them what they are. But we just keep moving the goalposts around on these conversations. So let's let people go be successful. And if we say, all right, this is the new licensing ordinance, you need to come into compliance with this licensing ordinance that has a social equity component, businesses will come into compliance with it and do the right thing because they will, there, there will be a financial benefit to do so. And they will want to continue operating uh based on an investment that they've already made. And so like, I think we can find a compromise here that lets the people, the buildings aren't getting bigger. You know, what they do inside the space is exactly the same. The only difference is one product is being medical, one product is being recreational. Like, the products they sell don't even change for the most part. So like, we're not creating any differentiation in the intensity of what goes on inside the four walls of the building.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. And then uh if I don't have any other kind of broad based questions, I think we'll move forward because the item number four is around the licensing. Five is around zoning ordinance and then six is the waivers. So Commissioner Jones?
Yep, thank you, Mayor. I just want to uh reiterate, I am in full support of the work that's being done to promote the social equity uh plan for, you know, for this. I think uh again, I, I tip my hat to uh the, the committee that was formed. And I think that we are very much on the right track. I love the idea of it being a nonprofit. I think there are a lot of different ways that we can go because, because it's set up as such. And so I'm encouraged by that work and I know I want that work to stop. I am saying though that I am, uh yes, I'm in support of, again, not all, but some. The, I'm in favor of, of fast tracking uh existing medical marijuana uh license holders to engage or recreational uh or to, 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 to go from that to also being able to engage uh in the recreational space as long as they have followed and have adhered to the MyVita uh thus far. They've been good actors with it, then I think this is an opportunity to put them in a position where they can again, engage in the recreational space. If they haven't, then they, 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 they sit and wait as well. But if they've been good actors, if they've shown the ability to actually, you know, do what they put on paper, then I think that is a way to, in many ways, reward their, uh, you know, their work thus far in the space. And again, I would expect that when it's all said and done, the social equity side of things will further enhance what we've already required for MyVita, so.
Move us beyond this, which was the overview of all of the, all three items. It sounds like we're comfortable moving forward. I'm looking back at this timeline, we're comfortable moving forward with um the social justice policy and moving that forward, that would come, we would be working on that over the month of July. So we have a lot of work. If you look at this timeline, uh next month, at both of our meetings, we'll be spending time on, on this issue. And so I'm going to move forward to reading the next, the resolution before us, item number four. Uh, and then we can talk more specifically about this item. This is a resolution providing for the publication of a proposed ordinance to amend chapter 105, which is the marijuana-related municipal licensing for the purpose of advancing social equity and updating environmental sustainability reporting requirements. So can I get a motion?
I'll move.
Okay, so moved and supported. So that item is now before us. And I think I'll turn back to maybe Mr. Campfield or Ms. Turkleson just to kind of help ground us back at um what is actually in this resolution since we talked about multiple uh issues in the overview. But let's kind of bring us back to what is in this resolution and before us that we're voting on today.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, Commissioners. This proposed ordinance is in line with the portion of the policy overview that I presented a few minutes ago. The ordinance would amend chapter 105, which is marijuana-related municipal licensing. And uh the proposed amendment would require uh or would accomplish seven key objectives. So the first of those is uh it would require licensed applicants to submit a social equity plan with their application. Second, it would authorize fee discounts and multi-year local licenses in accordance with the city's cannabis social equity policy. Third, it would remove cannabis consumption and event license types from the list of types authorized to operate in the city. Fourth, it would set July 20 as the date to begin accepting license applications for authorized license types other than retailers and micro businesses. Fifth, it would set October 20, which is the same as the current date. For all types, it would set October 20th as the date to begin accepting license applications for retailers and micro businesses. Sixth, it would replace the word marijuana with the word cannabis, except where necessary to maintain consistency with existing state law. And seventh, it would update environmental sustainability reporting requirements. The resolution before you would authorize publication of the proposed ordinance with consideration for adoption and possible immediate effect at your regular meeting on July 7.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Campfield. So let's focus on, on this item before us. I do have, I do have one question. Actually, I have several, but I'll ask one and then I'll turn to my colleagues. Um, for the, for the acceptance of licensing, I think this body has been pretty clear on multiple occasions. Um, for the, for the acceptance of licensing, I think this body has been pretty clear on multiple occasions. Oh, did I leave you?
Yes, for about 10 seconds.
Okay, all right. So going back to what I was saying, I think this body has been clear that if we can get this work done and start accepting applications before October 20th, we are happy to do that. Uh, so I'm wondering if under section 7.379, if we could, if we could, uh, say, um, no later than October 20th? But to provide us with some flexibility, that if we're able to get this work done next month or early August, that that date could be moved up?
That, so that I think is already provided for in another way. Um, 7.379, um, 1C.
Oh, okay.
Says the city commission may provide for an earlier date by resolution.
Okay, so that would still, that would still have to come back before us in the form of a resolution. We can't just embed it in this?
I think, um, determining what the trigger would be to start that apart from a resolution is challenging.
Okay.
Um, but the, the good thing about a resolution is it would, it would become effective immediately. And so we wouldn't deal with the same sort of delay as with an ordinance amendment.
Okay, okay, that's helpful. Thank you. Uh, okay, other questions? Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I have a question on 7, 368, number, where's that, number five? It seems really vague. Uh, recreational cannabis products must be separated from medical cannabis products? Um, like, I don't, like, why is that? Like, that seems above and beyond what state law requires. Um, no, I mean, it was a question that I had some folks from the industry ask me. Um, and I, again, I'm just looking for an explanation on why that, and they're like.
Well, we can look into that, Commissioner, thank you.
Is it a physical barrier? I mean, it just seems like it's a very vague statement. I mean, when it's like, I have to have two cases, I have to have two different growing rooms, or is it just a line on the, like, is it a line on the ground? But I don't.
Well, we know that the system that they use identifies plants as either recreational or medical.
Right.
So I think it would be adequate separation. So most places that, I believe, most places that we've seen, uh, at least, uh, know about are the medical dispensary is like in one spot. And the recreational retailer is probably in the same building, but in a different spot. So they, they tend, they tend, in some states, they tend to be separate. So, um, I think that's what we were, that's what we were envisioning. We can look into it more to see if there's a different, apply the definition.
Right, it's just sort of like our, uh, you know, licensing of space for alcohol, we take a different approach than some communities do in terms of a planner box can be a delineation of a corner. Versus some places require it to be roped up entirely. Um, let's just say, you know, what is the definition of separation here? So, um, uh, and then my, uh, other point is just, you know, again, I'd like to make a motion to amend, uh, section 7.379, uh, item B. To move the retailer, uh, through, uh, the provision A above it to allow these sections to march through that, uh, July 20th to 2020.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I couldn't quite hear you. Could you, could you repeat that section and then repeat your comment?
Yeah, I'm saying I'm moved to amend, uh, section 7.379, uh, item one, letter B, to move retailer, uh, from letter B to letter A. So that we can begin accepting licenses for retailer on July 20.
Okay, do I have support for that motion? The, I'm, the amendment?
Not support.
Okay, so Commissioner Moody, uh, supported the amendment. So the amendment would be, uh, and I, I don't see Commissioner Jones, um, in this. But I think this is aligned with what Commissioner Jones was saying about being willing to, um, allow retailers to move forward. But what I heard from Commissioner Jones is retailers that were consistent with our goals around equity. Not all of them, but the ones that had, um, significant points, at least initially, they would be considered first.
That is correct.
And I, and item three underneath it, you know, it, we've clearly already explicitly said in this licensing ordinance, it shall give priority processing preference of two applications in accordance with the city's cannabis social equity policy. So we've already set up a framework, uh, based on this licensing ordinance to create a preference structure.
I see. Thank you, thank you for pointing that out, Commissioner. Okay, so that is the amendment at hand. So, um, in this, the, the amendment that Commissioner O'Connor, um, provided with the support from Commissioner Moody was to move retailer. Now, that would still leave micro businesses, which, uh, again, we have some additional work to do in that, for that type of use. Um, that would still hold off on those licenses until October 20th. Um, okay, so Commissioners, questions and comments about the amendment? Commissioner Jones?
Wondering on the micro business side if there is an openness to, um, add the words on October 20, 2020 or before. Uh, simply because if you look at the data, uh, the, the micro businesses, it seems are one of the best opportunities for historically marginalized communities. And if they, if, 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 if we're looking to provide those type of opportunities, uh, there probably shouldn't be, um, a need to wait until October 20. So I just put that out there to see if there's an appetite to, to simply include or before on, uh, for section 7.379, number one, section B, after October 20, 2020.
Commissioner, I, I raised that very question. And if you look at C, um, the city commission can provide for an earlier acceptance by resolution at any point. Uh, so we could do that by resolution to take. All right, other questions about the amendment? Commissioner Rappart, did you have your heat? Okay, Commissioner?
Yeah, so Mayor, I have a question. So if we were to do this, um, earlier, we talked about the, um, waivers and that automatically, um, moving through recreational impacts. The, the conversation that, um, it sounds like was, um, postponed to have about removing waivers altogether. Um, so I'm just curious to know, I'm getting feedbacks, so if you have your, if you can mute yourself, that will help me out a little bit. Um, so I'm curious to know, why would we want to do this prior to resolving the waiver piece? Because I think we're going to have a reoccurrence of, of the, um, multiple public hearings, um, at the commission level as well as at, um, the planning commission level. And if we remove the, um, parks piece, that'll reduce it a little bit. But I think that to me still needs to be resolved before we, um, fast track recreation. I think that's the, that's the biggest pause that I have with the recreation is that was two things that we said we wanted to resolve before opening up, um, retailers for recreation. And it is the waiver piece, um, for all sensitive uses, parks, schools, um, religious institutions. And then the other piece is the equity component, which sounds like could possibly be resolved with, um, supporting this, um, ordinance. But I think we're gonna, we're gonna run into long meetings again, multiple public hearings and everything, all of the angst that came out of medical if we were to do this. Which is, I think, why, um, staff didn't recommend this right now. Because we know that there are additional things that needed to be resolved before fast tracking retailers.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question, um, Commissioner. I've been thinking about that as I've been reading them, these materials over the weekend. So I, and maybe Mr. Turkleson can jump in here. So I'm seeing the licensing piece of it separate than the zoning piece, which is next. And, um, my understanding with the licensing, it would only be for medical marijuana facilities that are already approved and in operation. So this would not, this would not impact any applications that come in. Uh, that this would only be for those right now who already under state law can convert over to, or at least apply to convert over to recreational. And it would, it would only be initially, um, those that, that scored high in the my Vida as well as going back to how they were initially approved. Uh, we initially reviewed applications where they didn't need a waiver. Uh, and so, so I'm, and maybe Mr. Turkleson, you can correct me if I'm wrong. So that's, that's, I think, the distinction for me is, are there ones that are already in operation? As Commissioner Jones said, that have been really good actors, that have complied with my Vida, uh, that have a track record that could be potentially fast tracked to move forward? While we also work over the next four to six weeks to, to address the zoning issues. And I, I share your concern about the waivers, um, and the waiver process. And many of you received the Q and A that the, uh, the team provided us. And if you saw under one of the, I have it here somewhere in front of me, um, we're the only city that provides waivers. So I, I do think that we need to, we need to address that, um, under the, under the next item with the zoning text amendments. So I'm seeing them as, as separate. But, uh, Ms. Turkleson, do you want to add anything? Am I getting this? Am I, am I clear in what I'm assuming?
I, I think so, yes. There's obviously multiple layers here, which is why we were suggesting we hold off. But for the first two years, any medical license holder within the state of Michigan would have the ability to apply for a recreational. So I think we would need to work with our legal department to figure out how to, um, perhaps add language to the licensing ordinance. That if we could restrict retail licenses to be issued to approved facility, medical facilities within the city of GR. While it's probably true, the high scoring my Vidas, um, did not require waivers. In total, I believe it was six provisioning centers did require waivers in order to become a medical, be approved for a medical provisioning center. And so there, there's this outstanding question of those six facilities, what happens? Can they convert? Do the waivers carry forward or grandfather in, if you will, to a recreational? Um, and then taking a step back, just from a land use perspective, the most public input we received was specific to provisioning centers, period. Of course, the waivers and the separation distances and sensitive uses were a significant part of that conversation. But our land use approvals are very, and I realize we're talking about licensing right now, but our land use approvals were very clear for medical only. And so that is the, the engagement that has taken place with the business associations, with the community. It, it didn't take place around what if this facility were recreational? Would they have supported it? Would the outcome have been different? Is it still an appropriate land use? And so there's, as you, as you obviously know, there, it's not just as simple as structuring the ordinance language. It goes far beyond that with how these land use approvals were considered to begin with, and whether or not they required waivers. And what happens if they can carry forward those waivers to a different, what is effectively a different land use for the zoning ordinance?
And to add to that, um, not only were we just considering medical, we, we communicated publicly to community groups and neighborhood groups and business districts. That they would be able to have an opportunity to weigh in, in the event that the existing medical, um, decides to then get a recreational license. I, I heard that because I attended many meetings, I heard that repeatedly because that was the plan. And so to, to change what was communicated, I think you're absolutely right, Mrs. Turkleson, is that we are, we would then go against what's been communicated to our public. About what this process was going to be as it relates to recreation. And so I, again, I think fast tracking this component now isn't wise. And it, it, it is actually contrary to all of the work that's gone into this up until this point. And I know that the pressure is there from the industry. And I, I sympathize with, you know, them wanting to get into business as quickly as possible. Um, but I also am sympathetic to the public who has spent a lot of time, a lot of hours into engaging in this process. And they didn't really have to, but they did because they were concerned or they were in support. Either way, we communicated to them that they would be re-engaged in the event that a different license would be added to the, um, the, um, retailer side of the industry. And I think, I think we owe it to them to go back.
Yeah, that's a, that's a, a good point, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Moody, did you have your hand up? Okay, all right. Uh, who did I just hear speaking? Uh, any, Commissioner, or I'm sorry, uh, Ms. Turkleson?
That was me, I, I apologize. I, a quick add was, you know, we have heard from the industry and these non-retail uses. I think one of the, the critical pieces for them is the non-retail uses are competing at a statewide level. Whereas, um, the, the provisioning centers, the recreational retailers are more inclined to compete regionally or locally. Um, so I, I'm not sure that, I, I don't want to speak for the industry, of course, but that the pressure to advance the non-retail, um, sectors. Which is what you're considering before you today, seems to be the more critical piece to advance more quickly. That was all.
Yeah, um, thank you.
To that point, though, I, I believe there's, you know, the, you know, the regional competitiveness of the industry. And I know that there are now licensed recreational facilities outside of the city of Grand Rapids have begun delivering to the city of Grand Rapids, so.
Yeah. Um, okay, so thank, thank you for that clarification, that those are, are, um, important points for us to consider. So I'm going to call the question on the amendment, and then I'm going to go back and call, um, the question on the resolution. So the amendment before us about, um, adjusting and moving the retailers up, uh, that is the amendment before us. So, uh, City Clerk, will you call the question, will you call the vote on that?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Yassasi?
No.
Commissioner Rappart?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
No.
Mayor Bliss?
No.
Okay, so that carries. And so what's back before us is the resolution that's amended, amended. So can I?
Hold up, Mayor, can I interrupt you for just a second? Um, we're at 2:30. I just want to, for any public that was coming in to watch the legislative team, just a programming note, that we're still in the committee of the whole. Sorry, I just want to make sure that, that everybody who's watching and following along understands where we're, where we're at right now. Sorry.
Okay, thank you, City Clerk. And we'll, uh, Commissioners, uh, Jones and O'Connor, who, uh, are with me on the legislative team, we'll have to, we'll have to reschedule that. There are some, um, critical issues that I want to make sure that we're able to talk about, but we'll, we'll compare calendars and, and find a time to do that. So Commissioners, then the resolution that's amended is before us. Uh, City Clerk, remind me, do I need to, that's already before us on the table. So now, can you, uh, call the question for this resolution?
Yes. Uh, Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Yassasi?
No.
Commissioner Rappart?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, it carries. Um, okay, so that will, uh, take us then to item number five. This is a resolution to consider zoning ordinance text amendments relative to marijuana, adding non-retail recreational marijuana land uses. And modifying some requirements for medical marijuana land uses, modifying the administration, timing, establishing a process for the review of approved non-retail medical facilities. And seeking to convert to or introduce a recreational component and other amendments meant to clarify and correct previously adopted language. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
All right, so moved and supported. Uh, and Commissioners, this, this resolution would establish July 7th as the date for the city commission to consider these amendments. Uh, and so I'll turn it over to Ms. Turkleson to walk us through this item.
Thank you. So I believe in my earlier presentation, I covered quite a bit of what is included in this amendment. Um, we've, we've pointed the fast track approach, um, just to high level recap, is that we would allow for, as proposed. We would allow for medical or recreational growers, processors, secure transporters and safety compliance facilities to grow, process, transport or test marijuana products. Within the city of Grand Rapids, under a, what we call a directory view or an administrative review. We would preserve all current or does not propose any modifications to separation distance requirements, uh, or waiver process or sensitive uses. Uh, perhaps the most, um, or what we haven't discussed yet are some of the changes we are also proposing relative to the Good Neighbor Planning process. There was a couple of challenges associated with the lack of specificity on the notification process for some of the neighborhood meetings. And so these recommended changes are in line with what they would like to see, and, and do make a lot of sense to be more consistent with what the city is required to use in terms of notification from meetings. Also, one of the areas that the Planning Commission was challenged on was about parking requirements, and parking was, was a significant point of concern, traffic generally associated with the provisioning center applications. So we are trying to align the different marijuana land use types with similar uses in the zoning ordinance. So for example, we would consider the provisioning center retailer, or retail land use, and assign it a retail parking requirement, whereas right now, we are silent on that within the ordinance. So those changes, I feel, are important, but perhaps less concerning in light of the scope of the other amendments. And in the interest of time, I, I won't go through more detail of the other amendments that we've already been talking about today, unless you have a question.
Mayor, if I, if I could ask Ms. Turkelson a question for us. So the, with the change to the license ordinance, we also need to make changes to the zoning ordinance. And what I would propose to do is we introduce the ordinance as is, with the understanding that when it comes back to you, it'll reflect the action that Commission took today on the, on the licensing ordinance. So we will explain how we, how we will figure out how to do that, and bring it back to you before your meeting on the 7th, rather than, I'm not sure we worked through it here now to do that. I'd rather have time for the team to take a look at it to make sure we do it well. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. DeLong. Okay, Commissioners, questions on this? This is a lengthy document with a lot of information in it. And again, this is, this is the publication of it, and it'll come back before us for consideration on the 7th. Commissioner Lanier?
Yeah, so this is, this is also the document that includes the removal of the park waivers for Commission consideration, and I'd like to make an amendment to remove all waivers or sensitive uses. That's a motion.
All right, so that's, okay, yes. Motion and supported to remove the waivers.
Mayor, can we just get a point of clarification maybe from Ms. Turkelson or the Law Department? Does, can that be done without reconsideration from the Planning Commission?
So just to clarify, that the proposed amendment you have in front of you does not make any changes to define sensitive uses, separation distances, or waivers. So as it currently sits, all of, it would continue the status quo, meaning that churches and parks, for example, are defined sensitive uses, have a separation distance requirement that could be waived. The modification that I, I think you're thinking of is, is really only to your own policy, a City Commission policy.
And that's the next item.
And that's the next item, correct. So there are no changes to separation distances and sensitive uses in the draft before you.
Now, she, she wants to propose changes to, she wants to remove that language. So is, is that something that would require reconsideration, or do that, from the Planning Commission?
I apologize, I was getting a notice on my computer to reboot. I can confirm with the Attorney's Office, but I don't believe that it would, because the Planning Commission did consider changes in sensitive uses generally, and waiver requirements generally, and separation distances. So the City Commission would have the ability to make amendments.
So what, so the amendment that the Commissioner proposed, and I believe we've talked about it in the past, is to remove with the waiver, remove the opportunity for a waiver altogether. And again, as, as you read in a number of the documents provided in the Q and A, this is a, a unique, a unique process that we created a couple of years ago when we created the medical marijuana ordinance. And so what I'm hearing from the Commissioner, and what was supported by Commissioner Jones, is that we would eliminate the opportunity to get a waiver to any of the sensitive, sensitive uses. And so that process of requesting a waiver, as is currently written, would, would be removed. So, so other, other questions or comments about that, Commissioner O'Connor?
Would, yeah, I have my frustrations with waivers as well, but would that have impact on then, you know, what we just adopted for businesses transitioning from medical to recreational? Would that waiver elimination impact any abilities to make that transition?
Well, I think, so in the, in the, the PowerPoint, as well as in the memo, the, the question about waivers, there were a couple of things. If we eliminate the waiver, the issue that we need to address is what happens to the, to the facilities that have already been approved and are operating, who received a waiver? So I think that is going to have to be, and I, and one of the, one of the things, I can't remember if I read it, in here and another location, was do those companies get grandfathered in? And I believe, Mr. Turkelson, did you say there were six of them?
I believe that's correct, yes.
So I think that is a secondary issue we would have to take up, and I, I'm sure that there's some legal issues that we would need to address related to that, because they have already been approved. But I think going forward, what I'm hearing in this language is Commissioner Lanier's amendment, and Commissioner Jones, who supported it, would be to remove the waiver, waivers altogether. All right, so other questions about that, or comments about that? Commissioner Lanier?
Mayor, I'm also thinking too, I know we were, there was some confusion regarding the sensitive uses regarding youth centers, because schools are included, and because there are other systems that are included, like parks, that are tied to having protections for youth. That was another component to the waivers that we wanted to include in sensitive uses, or at least define, when it talks about schools, that it could also include the, the youth center. So I just want to bring that up now as well, since we're considering this amendment.
All right. Thank you for that, and I, I think I'll come back to that when, as it relates to sensitive uses, and, and I'll see if I can, if there's any other questions related to the amendment to remove the language that allows for waivers. Commissioners, any other questions about that? I see Ms. Riwa joined us, so I'm sure she may have some thoughts about legal, legal options we have related to waivers. But let me see if any other Commissioners have questions about that issue. Commissioner Moody?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, thank you. I just want to make sure that, and removing the waivers, those that are already in, that there be some exception made for them.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. I, I think, I think legally, we would, we would have to do that, but I'll turn to Ms. Riwa to, to share her thoughts.
That's what Legal wanted to say, is to the extent that waivers have already been granted for medical use land rights, those would be grandfathered rights, if they haven't been abandoned or anything. But to the extent that this body, you know, moves to get rid of the waiver process, but still wants to maintain the ability for those that have medical waivers to, you know, still be cited as a recreational, please add that to the amendment, and then I think we'll need a little bit of time to make sure that language looks really good. But I, I would recommend that the board, the, the Commission be clear on that's what you want, so that we know how to, you know, write, write that in a more concise way in the actual ordinance.
So Ms. Riwa, and am I understanding, you're saying elimination of the waivers, however, allowing an exception to those who have already received a license? Is that what you're saying?
So I think the question is still, they've already gotten Planning Commission approval for the medical. I believe the ordinance has written particularly for things like retailers, they may still need to go back to the Planning Commission. For things like growers, where you'd have to go for an administrative review, we, we'd still have to review that. I, I think what we need to be clear on is, if you are looking to get rid of the waivers, that's a hard 1,000-foot stop. So if your intent is to still allow the ability for existing medical grandfather to not necessarily be barred, that there be some specific valve to allow that for the recreational use, because as written, the ordinance treats recreational and medical use differently. And so you, you don't, I don't want, if you don't want those entities that already have a medical use with a waiver to be shut out of the market, because they will then not have a waiver for recreational, then we need to say that specifically, so it's clear, and there's clarity for the industry, the Planning Commission, the Planning Director, and everybody.
I, thank you, Madam Mayor, if I could. I, I'm totally understanding, Ms. Riwa, your recommendation. However, I have, in my amendment that I'm making, I don't have any interest in grandfathering in existing medical-approved licenses to convert or to add on a recreational license in a retailing facility, as a, to grandfather them in to be able to do that. So my principles do not allow me to reverse the word that we shared with the community regarding them having an opportunity to be able to weigh into the retailers for recreational. And I think having an amendment that would grandfather those provisioning centers in would be contrary to what I'm asking for. So I think what I'm asking for is going forward, removing the waivers altogether going forward. And I think that with the provisioning centers that have gone through the planning process that perhaps didn't have any opposition, you know, that may be a way to, for the Planning Commission to reconsider, to, to find a different way to fast-track them, and maybe come back to the Commission with another recommendation for us to consider, but right now, I'm, I'm talking going forward, all of them, just removing the waivers.
Thank you, Commissioner, and that, and that was my question. If we remove the, we eliminate the waiver process altogether, is this an issue like Commissioner Moody had, those six, those six facilities that potentially, some people may want to allow exceptions for, is that something that we, we don't necessarily have to figure that out today? Is that something that we could revisit as we move forward over the next two meetings?
Probably, because I, and I will rely on Kristin Turkelson on this as well. It's my understanding that the fast-tracked items are just growers, none of the fast-track moving forward right now would be retailers, and I believe only retailers needed the waivers. So to the extent that you remove the waivers, those six may be in a little bit of limbo in terms of whether and how there may be any conversion, but it shouldn't affect, it should not affect the fast-track items moving forward, but just understand that this is creating a bit of a, bit of a complexity there. Kristin?
I, well, and I, I, it, it creates a little bit of complexity, but I, I do hope that we can, we can figure that out. So, so I appreciate that. And I see Commissioner O'Connor's hand is up, so I'm, should I get to other Commissioners as well? Ms. Riwa may not have followed along with the prior amendment and the, the resolution that was passed, so someone may need to update around that. Commissioner O'Connor?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I just also, you know, as it relates to the kind of, of our last conversation, as Commissioner Jones brought up the conversation around microbusinesses, if we do not allow some sort of waiver process, the best path for potential equity applicants to get into the, in the future, is the microbusiness path. And given land use constraints we've established already, waivers will most likely be required in order for some of those businesses to be able to come into our community.
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner O'Connor. You know, I, I expect that that will be another point that we discuss as a Commission, as, you know, as we look at those kind of unresolved issues. We may decide to have different distance requirements for microbusinesses, knowing that that is an opportunity for local ownership. And so again, I, I think there's, there's still some issues that we need to talk about over the next couple of meetings, that we still need to, to work out. It's a, that's a good point. Commissioners, other questions? Eric DeLong, did you want to weigh in?
No, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Sassi, did you have a comment? Okay, so the, the question before us is the amendment related to removing the waiver process. City Clerk, will you call the question on that?
I've got one, one question regarding clarification. Just wanted to make sure that the vote now is based on the amendment specifying that this would pertain to existing medical license holders as well. So they would, they would, I mean, if, if, hypothetically speaking, if they're near church, and the waiver is, and, and we have, we don't have waivers anymore, then they would be, they would not be able to sell recreational marijuana from that particular location.
That's, that's correct, for those six that have waivers.
For the six that have waivers, okay, yeah.
Six out of, out of the 24, unless we make an exception, which is something I think we could revisit at our next couple of meetings. But in, in regards to this zoning language, the zoning ordinance text amendment, it would remove that section related to allowing waivers out of the document. That is what Commissioner Lanier was proposing.
And so again, in essence, those six would be penalized, and as I've heard from Ms. Riwa, they, the, the way it's set up now is, again, they, it's, it's recreational, recreational and medical are treated differently, but in terms of, again, th- this year would, would, would state that those six would not be able to be in a position, and I have no idea who the six are, nor do I, do I, do I need to know, but those six would not be able to sell, or if they're approved, they would not be able to, well, actually, they would be approved, because they, they wouldn't be able to, they wouldn't be able to be approved for a recreational license. Yeah.
Can I chime in? This is Amber. I do not have a way to raise my hand at the moment. There is a state law that says that we cannot prohibit them from co-locating, and that's one of the issues that needs to be vetted by a legal department with all these proposed changes, in addition to what Kristin just brought up.
Okay, thank you, Amber. So that, that is something that the legal department will spend some more time on?
Yes, absolutely.
All right, thank you. All right, Commissioners, any other questions about the amendment to remove the waiver process? Commissioner Moody?
I just want to have clarity, because I just heard what Commissioner Jones just said. This will affect those individuals who already have waivers, correct?
It, it will not impact their ability to continue to sell medical marijuana, which they have been approved for, but potentially, unless we come up with some language to allow an exception and allow them to be grandfathered in, then they would not be able to move forward with moving from medical to recreational.
You, you broke up a little bit there.
Oh, sorry about that. So it would, it would not prevent them from continuing to, to do what they've already been approved to do with medical marijuana, but potentially, it would impact their ability to convert from medical to recreational, unless we come up with an exception process.
And how long do we have before we come up with an exception process?
So what would be before, well, Mr. Turkelson, you can maybe talk timeline. You know, what we're doing today is, we are considering these text amendments, and they'll come back before us on July 7th, so maybe you could talk about timeline.
Okay. So what we had planned was an introductory reading today, and then final adoption of the quote-unquote "fast-track ordinance" on July 7th, and then we would be requesting a discussion with City Commission at your second meeting in July. the quote-unquote "fast-track ordinance" on July 7th. And then we would be requesting a discussion with City Commission at your second meeting in July, at the Committee of the Whole, which I believe is July 21st, to discuss the additional items noted under the deliberative track, and certainly we could add this to that conversation.
Thank you. All right, any other questions? All right, so City Clerk, do you want to call the vote on, this is the amendment to eliminate the waiver process?
Yes.
Oh. Wait. Okay, timeout. This is, again, to eliminate the entire waiver process.
Yes.
Again, with the understanding that existing medical license holders would not, or those six would not be able to move forward unless we made some provisions move forward on the recreational side.
Correct. Let me make sure I'm giving you accurate information. Mr. Turkleson, is that correct? Is Commissioner Jones correct?
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. Okay.
Yeah, okay. All right.
All right, City Clerk?
Commissioner Moody? Commissioner Isasi?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruffart?
No.
Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
No.
Commissioner O'Connor?
No.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes. All right, so that fails. And so that takes us back to the resolution to consider the zoning text amendments. These are all the amendments that are being proposed. It's publicizing these today and establishing our next meeting, June 7th, as a date for us to consider the amendments. So again, we'll have a discussion about these proposed changes, recommended changes to the text amendments at our next meeting on July 7th. So Commissioners, any other questions or comments, again, about publicizing these recommended text amendments, recognizing that we still have additional conversations around the issues that Ms. Turkleson raised around sensitive uses as well as some other conversations we'll have on the 7th? Commissioner Lanier?
So Mayor, I think if we're not going to make the needed changes for waivers, I have no interest in removing the City Commission from being involved in that process as it's been in place before until we can figure out the best process for waivers. I think this interim step, to me, doesn't lend itself for the level of engagement that I personally would like to have as a Commissioner on this, especially in light of some of the changes that are coming down the pike that weren't necessarily ones that were on our radar when we came into this meeting. So I just want to make sure that we keep our pulse, our fingers on the pulse as we're considering waivers. So I guess that amendment is just to exclude the portion about the City Commission. It was, it stated something along the lines, I'm sorry because the agenda isn't up on the screen, but it stated something along the lines of rescinding the City Commission policy on park waivers. So I don't want to rescind that at this time, so that's my amendment.
Okay, so that is the next item, item number six. So we're going to get to that next. That's not in the zoning text amendments. So we'll...
The one that I'm looking at does include it.
Well, it'll be based on our next vote, which is to rescind the City Commission policy around park waivers.
So though it is embedded in this one, so if it doesn't get approved at the next one, then that'll just be deleted, because I can't remember what line, what page is on it. I'm going back to it now. It's on the very first page, it's the last bullet. So I just want to make sure that I'm clear there.
Is that right, Mr. Turkleson?
I'm trying to look at what you're looking at, Commissioner Lanier. The zoning ordinance...
It's under the background section, then it has four bullets, and the last one is the park waivers.
Okay, so yes, that's a summary of all of the items that you're looking at today. The proposed zoning amendment that you're considering right now does not propose any changes to park waivers, except for being a sensitive use. So I believe Mayor Bliss is correct that it is the next item where you'll consider rescinding the policy.
Thank you. And Mr. Turkleson, can I also just take this moment to talk about process? Because I'm going back to your page number 21 in the PowerPoint. And under deliberative approach, it shows that we still have additional conversations around a number of items, including microbusinesses, sensitive uses, separation distances, waiver criteria, and cannabis uses. So we, this isn't our only bite at the apple. And can you talk to us a little bit more about what you were envisioning around this deliberative process so that Commissioners don't feel like we need to make all of these decisions right now? I interpreted a deliberative process as giving us a little bit more time, once these text amendments were made public, giving us more time to have some conversations and to really delve into each of these items a little bit deeper. And that may address some of the concerns that I've heard around sensitive uses as well as waivers.
That's correct. So thus far, the item that you had before you was where I heard that there was some consensus among the City Commission, and it aligned with both the Planning Director recommendation to the Planning Commission and the Planning Commission recommendation to you. So the non-retail element, there seemed to be some consensus, maybe not 100% in all areas, but some consensus. Where we don't have consensus seems to be more around the waivers, sensitive uses, et cetera. And so the thinking was that we could have a facilitated conversation, take a little more time, allow the non-retail industry to move forward while we make decisions as to how the Commission would like to handle sensitive uses, waivers, et cetera.
Okay, okay, thank you. I just want to make it clear to everyone that this isn't our only conversation about this and that we still have work to do around those items. And we'll be able to, again, thank you, the materials, and listen to a number of folks in our community before we revisit that. So, okay. So with that, I'm going to call the question on this item. And again, this is the resolution to consider these text amendments to come back for additional consideration on July 7th. City Clerk, will you call for the vote?
Yep. Commissioner Isasi?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruffart?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, it carries. Okay, that will take us to our final item, and hopefully we'll be able to finish this up. As I see, we are coming close to Public Safety Committee.
Just a quick announcement, if you're on Public Safety coming on this meeting, can you turn off your video till this meeting goes? We're still in Committee of the Whole, just as a programming note.
Thank you, City Clerk. Okay, Commissioners, so, and maybe I'll start with Ms. Turkleson again to explain why the recommendation was to rescind this. My understanding is that based on the applications that we have and us moving forward with some of these other changes, that this process could be eliminated. And so can I get a motion to consider resolution rescinding the City Commission policy 900-57 under marijuana park waivers?
一致
All right. Do I support? Okay, moved and supported. Ms. Turkleson, you want to explain this a little bit more?
Sure. So as I previously mentioned, we are through all of the items in the queue for medical applications. It's possible we could get more, but at this time, we're not necessarily anticipating that. So there, the challenges with the waivers and the complexities of them, we felt like now was a good time to start moving in the direction of that deliberative conversation down the road that we could rescind this policy. Should we get any more applications that require park waivers, the Planning Commission would have the ability, as they do now, to consider whether it's appropriate to grant a waiver. So this was seen as an interim step.
And individuals would be able to, they'd be noticed through the Planning Commission process, and they'd be able to go and voice their objection directly to the Planning Commissioners?
Absolutely. And there wouldn't be the confusion of coming to the City Commission first and then the Planning Commission in that multi-step process that's been, concerns have been expressed about that. So it would eliminate that multi-step process, and they would go to the Planning Commission to voice their input on a park waiver.
Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioners, questions about this?
Mayor, I'm not on camera right now, but I just wanted to make a quick comment. I think I am very appreciative of Ms. Turkleson and the team for making this recommendation, but I do think in light of the previous approval to fast-track retailers for recreational, I do think that for me now, I was very supportive of it, but now recognizing that that change, that significant change has been made, I think it's important to be able to allow the public to engage directly with the Commission with their perspectives on this because they frequently are engaging us in other ways. So I wouldn't have been supportive. I'm sorry that I'm not going to be at this time.
Okay, all right, thanks, Commissioner. Commissioners, other thoughts or questions about this? Okay, I'm going to ask our City Clerk then to call the question.
Commissioner Ruffart?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Isasi?
No.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, it carries. Okay, Commissioners, that takes us to the end of our scheduled agenda. Thank you all for hanging in for a long meeting, and I know we had meetings before the Committee of the Whole, so I know it's been a long day, and hopefully you'll get a break, except those of you who are on the Public Safety Committee. And so before I recess us for our night meeting, I am going to ask you, I'm going to ask for a motion to go into executive session, and because we ran late, I'm going to ask us to come back and go into executive session at 6:00 PM tonight before our 7:00 PM meeting. And this will be to get an update on some pending litigation and a legal opinion. So can I get a motion to go into executive session at 6:00 PM tonight?
一致
All right, moved and supported. City Clerk, will you call the vote to go into executive session?
Yes, Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Isasi?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruffart?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes. All right, Commissioners, so I will see you back for executive session at 6:00, and then our Commission meeting tonight at 7:00. And then Commissioner Jones and O'Connor will try to find a time for us to connect and reschedule our legislative team. All right, thank you, everyone. Appreciate all your work on these important issues.